Meeting and I thank you for your time spent with me as a new mayor of how to run everything. So, welcome. Happy New Year. With that, City Clerk Elaine Tran, can you please do roll call?
Pleasure. Councilmember Hollibur?
Present.
Councilmember Phong?
Here.
Councilmember Patton?
Here.
Vice Mayor Aliva?
Here.
Mayor Snyder?
Here.
All councilmembers are present.
Excellent. Now, if we could all please rise for the pledge allegiance, give me a little bit of time to stand up. The knee is still working slow. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, we have several ceremonial presentations tonight and I hope that we have. Elaine, do we know if our guests are here for the first presentation?
Um, I'm not sure. I did not receive a confirmation.
Very good. Well, we'll try that. The first presentation and I will read it.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Ms. Mayor, can we take down the flag? Of course, I'm working on the next one. I would do apologize for the delay.
And, um, City Clerk, if you just want to pop up the Martin Luther King proclamation. Thank you. Okay, January eighteenth, twenty twenty-one is the national holiday to observe the birthday of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., one of America's greatest visionary leaders who peacefully created civil rights activism in our nation through nonviolent means. And doc- and whereas Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. devoted his life to advancing equality, social justice, and opportunity for all, and challenged all Americans to participate in the never-ending work of building a more and perfect nation. And whereas Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. rose to the national scene in nineteen fifty-six during the Montgomery bus boycotts, the boycotts led to a United States Supreme Court ruling that Alabama's segregation laws were unconstitutional. And whereas he led many successful campaigns for social justice, including Freedom Rides and the Albany Movement, these campaigns helped path the passage of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four. And whereas the city of Millbrae recognizes Dr. King's legacy as one of America's outstanding civil rights leaders and calls on all residents in Millbrae to reflect on the words and service of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. to celebrate his life and influence on our nation and consider their responsibility to bring peace, equality, and respect to their homes and communities. And whereas Dr. King's words and actions are not simply relics of an era past, but a call to vigilance as pertinent today as they were during his lifetime and is incumbent upon all of us to carry forward the principles of peace, equality, and service exemplified by Dr. King by treating everyone with dignity, courtesy, and respect. Now therefore, we, the members of the Millbrae City Council, do hereby proclaim January eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, as Martin Luther King Jr.'s day of service. And we were hoping, do we have someone to accept this?
I'm here to accept it, Anne.
Excellent. Thank you. Um, please, um, Ms. Katie Nolan-Stivoe, please accept this proclamation.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mayor. I'm here on behalf of the Millbrae Anti-Racist Coalition to accept this proclamation. And I would like to say that, you know, in I think many of us have been troubled by the events that have occurred over the past week, over the past four years, and frankly, the past four centuries of our history. And keeping in mind, you know, the powerful message of someone like Martin Luther King Jr. in this moment. And I hope that we are able to come together as a community when the pandemic has passed, us to actually get to know each other better, listen together, and bring ourselves to a better place in America because it's truly the small communities such as ours that can make big changes and make people feel more engaged civically and connected to their neighbors. And so I think we should just keep in mind Martin Luther King's wonderful legacy of nonviolent protest and civic engagement. And so thank you so much to the city for issuing this proclamation.
And thank you, Katie. Uh, comments from council? Gina, Councilwoman Patton?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, uh, former Mayor Lee is trying to get in and raise his hand. Uh, he's having some difficulty. Uh, I don't know how we resolve that.
Elaine, can you take care of that? Or Eduardo? As we're, if, if we're waiting for-
There's no one in the waiting room, so well. Uh, there's no one in the way.
Anyway, Madam Mayor, I'd like to have an opportunity to speak.
There he is. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Um, we recognize former Mayor Lee.
Uh, there's no one in the waiting room, so well, uh, well.
Uh, Mayor Snyder and the members of the city council, good evening, happy new year. Uh, I thank, I just, I am the president of the Asian Pacific Islander Caucus, a caucus made up elected officials, Asian officials, who, um, support diversity. So this proclamation is very important. Uh, and I just thank the city for recognizing the fact that, uh, they are actively trying to recognize and promote, uh, diversity through to many programs and many civic group activities. Uh, this is so important because, as we know, there's, there's a lot of racial tensions in the nation and it's, it's spilled over into small look, uh, local cities. And for us to, uh, stand up and say, we're not go- we're going to, uh, we're going to say all of our citizens are, are, should be treated equally, uh, but they also should be recognized for their diversity. So I thank you, Madam Mayor, for the opportunity.
Thank you. Uh, council, any comments? I don't see any hands raised. If I've missed you, I apologize. I just want to say, uh, thank you. Last year, the city of Millbrae had its very first, uh, day of, of, um, volunteering into the community. And sadly, we cannot do that because of COVID this year. But I know that the city manager and staff are working on and identifying projects where we can come together as a community. Last year, in a very short period of time, we, we put together an MLK event and over forty people, including a lot of our students who went to the Sojourning Event, the Civil Rights Trip to the South with, um, our resident, uh, Mr. Mr. Steinberg. And we came out and we dug up plants and we transplanted plants. And it was just a really, really amazing day. And I miss getting to see all the people of Millbrae. But we're going to do it as soon as it is safe for all of us to gather together and do it a community day of service in memory of Martin Luther King Jr. So thank you for that. Okay, thank you, Katie. Um, we have another, uh, another one, and I believe in this case Amy Lauer will be accepting. So Amy, you're up next. Uh, this proclamation. Uh, whereas we understand and recognize that there is a racial divide in our country and we must all work earnestly to heal the wounds created by racial, ethnic, and religious bias and build an equitable and just society so that every person can thrive. And whereas the city of Millbrae upholds the principle of compassion, which is essential to a community's ability to create a caring and exclusive culture and climate. And whereas all individuals have the right to be provided every opportunity to grow, learn, and thrive in nurturing environments and given the opportunity to succeed. And whereas every single person has the capability to make a simple change within him or herself that can have a profound effect on society. And whereas racial healing is a vital and crucial commitment to the education, social, mental, and overall well-being of all citizens and residents in the United States. And whereas Millbrae's proclamation in the National Day of Healing signifies that as a community, we want to create a space to celebrate distinct differences that make Millbrae vibrant. It also means that we are aware that there are still deep racial divisions in America that must be overcome and healed. And some of these exist in Millbrae as residents still experience bias and prejudice. And whereas the city of Millbrae, in conjunction with other cities and towns throughout the United States, acknowledges January nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, as the National Day of Racial Healing and urges all citizens and residents to promote racial healing and transformation in the ways that are best suited for them individually as a means of working together to ensure the best quality of life for every man, woman, and child. Now therefore, we, the members of the Millbrae City Council, do hereby proclaim January nineteenth, twenty twenty-one as National Day of Racial Healing. And Amy, if you'd like to say a few words. Or Ms. Lauer?
Mayor, and thank you to the city council. Um, I also come as representative of the fledgling organization Millbrae Anti-Racist Coalition. And, uh, we, uh, we feel very, um, uh, acknowledged and actually embraced by the city council and many members of our community. As you know, we started very grassroots and put on a march and the city council was there right in front, um, during a vigil and participated and spoke and really kicked us off. Uh, also, we've had tremendous support from the city with two virtual town halls where we started the conversation, which is very in keeping with the spirit of the day of racial healing. So this is relatively new. Uh, this is the fifth year, fifth, uh, the fifth National Day of Racial Healing. And, um, our aspiration is actually to build momentum and have an event in Millbrae next year um, and continue our work to help the community. Uh, we will be continuing to sponsor arts and cultural events, doing our best to raise awareness and education and to result in advocacy for all people and policy change. So thank you so much. And as a gift, our family would like to donate, um, our Black Lives Matter banner, uh, to the city. We are happy to, uh, roll up our sleeves and put on some gloves and, uh, set it up either on Martin Luther King Day or on the day after, which is the Day of Racial Healing. And you can let us know if this is something you'd like us to do for you. So thank you so much.
Excellent. Thank you. And I will recognize, um, Michael Kelly, another part of ARC and a fellow Millbrae Lion back there holding up the sign. Thank you for that. Uh, city council, uh, any comments from council members? Was that?
Yes, please.
Uh, please, go ahead, Councilwoman Patton.
Uh, yes, I'm very proud of our community and how we are working together continuously to try to make really significant positive changes in our community. So thank you to everyone who's participating tonight in all of these resolutions. And, um, we have much to do, but it's worth the effort and hopefully we can make significant changes moving forward. So thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Um, any other council members? Any members of the public? If you use the raise hand function, we will know to call on you. I'm not seeing anyone. I don't want to steal the cit- ah, I see Mary Ellen. Elaine, do you see Mary Ellen? My iPhone, that's all it says.
Um, we already asked her to unmute.
Yes. Hi, welcome, Mary Ellen. It's actually Bonnie Patton. Marianne is my daughter. I'm using her phone. Um, I wanted just to ask in regards to, I live on, um, the seven hundred block of Barcelona. I'm inquiring about the status of the surplus lots on the seven hundred block of Barcelona Drive and Santa Margarita. Ma'am? Yes? Um, um, we're going to have a public comment for items not on the agenda. Would you mind waiting for that? Right now, we were doing comments on a particular agenda item. Okay, I, I apologize. No problem. No problem at all. We will call on you then. Um, I would only, I, I hate, you're welcome to take a little bit of the city's thunder away, and I'm sure the city manager will comment on this. The city is working on a third in the series of public events to talk about racial issues. This one will be targeted for our young people. I know that Michael Kelly and I were on a call with our, our Leo's Board of Directors, a group of young, um, eighth grade to, uh, seniors in high schools, talking about the impacts of the last week. So I'm really happy that the city is already moving forward on creating a forum for young people to come and talk and be able to talk out what's happened to our nation in the past week, what it feels like and how we can move together on that. So thank you, City Manager Williams and staff for that. If there are no other comments, I'm going to move to the third proclamation. Okay, um. City Clerk Tran, I heard an, um. Okay, uh, whereas the Millbrae City Council supports, oops. Sorry. Uh, whereas the United States Senate designated January eleventh as National Human Trafficking Awareness Day in two thousand and seven. And beginning in twenty ten by presidential proclamation, each January has been designated National Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month. And whereas human trafficking is a human's rights violation and a violation of both federal and California law, it also promotes the breakdown of families and communities, fuels organized crime, undermines public health, and imposes large economic costs. And whereas the crimes of human trafficking are present in every county and every US state, in every country, excuse me, and every US state, the FBI has identified the San Francisco Bay Area as an area of high prevalence for human trafficking. Although human trafficking is illegal, victims often do not recognize their victimization, do not know that help is available or where to seek assistance. And whereas forced labor, involuntary domestic servitude, and commercial sexual exploitation of adults and youth have been found to exist within local communities. And whereas public awareness about human trafficking still needs to reach broader communities and communicate more information about the nuances of this crime. And whereas the city of Millbrae supports the efforts to identify and address human trafficking in collaboration with other governmental and non-governmental organizations with San Mateo County. Now, therefore, we, the members of Millbrae City Council, do hereby proclaim January twenty twenty-one as Human Trafficking Prevention Month and encourage our residents to support the County of San Mateo's efforts in the fight against human trafficking by reporting suspicious activity, organize and participation, uh, participate in awareness training and get involved in local events. And I believe we have, uh, we have Ms. Estes to, uh, accept the proclamation?
Yes, Mayor, I'm here.
Please, uh, you have the floor, Ms. Estes.
Thank you so much. Um, good evening, honorable mayor and city council members. And thank you so much for your time and for placing this important resolution on your agenda to bring attention, um, to those participating in the meeting tonight and who'll read the minutes later about the crime of human trafficking. My name is Pamela Estes and I'm the Human Trafficking Advocacy Coordinator for San Mateo County and I'm here to accept the resolution. Unfortunately, many people still think that human trafficking is a crime that only happens in another country and happens to other people, but they couldn't be more wrong. It occurs throughout the United States and even in San Mateo County. It happens to women and girls, men and boys, foreign nationals, and even the United States citizens. In two thousand and nineteen, as part of the Human Trafficking Program, we did an assessment of, um, organizations within the county and the area that served victims from San Mateo County and determined that in the year two thousand and nineteen, three hundred and four individuals were identified in San Mateo County as having been exploited by a trafficker and victimized by the crime of human trafficking. That's an average identification of six people a week. We have no way of knowing how many people are victimized who are still in the shadows. At the San Mateo County Human Trafficking Program, our responsibilities are to enhance the response to human trafficking countywide. And we do this in a number of different ways. We encourage collaborative partnerships among county agencies and non-governmental organizations. We work to enhance the delivery of services to victims, the identification of victims through training of law enforcement and other organizations, and to raise community awareness. So, uh, you can see from my virtual screen is our, um, our website address. And so we would love to have you visit the website. If you go to the, um, menu bar that says news, we are hosting this month, um, a webinar series. It's free and open to the public on the crime of human trafficking to let the community know more about it. We have on, uh, this week on January fourteenth, an introduction to human trafficking that's going to be delivered in Spanish from six thirty to seven forty-five via Zoom. You just need to go to the website, register to get the link. And then on the twenty-first of January, um, six thirty to seven forty-five, we have another presentation that'll look at human trafficking in San Mateo County and the response that has been put together so far. And then lastly, but not least, on the twenty-eighth, from six thirty to seven forty-five, we're going to be talking about commercial sexual exploitation of youth and how to identify risk factors. So if you have children, if you are work with youth, we highly encourage you to participate in that webinar to learn more. We're available if you have questions about human trafficking, if you are a part of an organization or business that needs to know more about human trafficking, we're here to help. So thank you so much for making this a part of your evening. I know you've got a lot of business to take care of. Um, and so we appreciate very much for your passage of this resolution and for being invited tonight to help raise awareness about this crime in our community. Thank you, Mayor.
Sure. Thank you so much for being here and for bringing this to our attention. Vice Mayor Aliva?
Yes, Pamela, I just want to thank you so much for what you do and advocate for. I, I have to say that in my line of business on my day job, I was appalled to see it and report it and to find out, um, that it was in our backyard. And I am so grateful for, um, hoping to save or help young victims of what you fight for on a daily basis. And I just want to say thank you very, very much.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. And thank you for reporting.
I have a question for the city manager. I, I know that the county, and, uh, you've probably already done this, you sent a, a message out about the workshops on, uh, Nextdoor and SMC Alert. Maybe not SMC Alert. If not, we do, we can send it out on Nextdoor for you so that our residents can hearing and have easier access for that. So if you send it to me or send it to the, to our city clerk, that would be fantastic on that. When I was newly elected, we had training at city council because the Super Bowl was coming to town and the sex trade that comes with that. So I think refresher trainings are always very important. So again, thank you so much and thank you for taking, for, for working on this issue. Any other, uh, Councilwoman Patton?
Um, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, does this county still require, uh, notification at some of our hotels? I know there were postings on, um, I, I think it was required by law at one point in time. Is that still the case?
Yes, uh, yes, it is. It is required by state law that all of the hotels, motels, and bed and breakfast ends um, include a state mandated notice that's in a, that's publicly viewable. Um, we had a volunteer crew go back out in, it was late twenty nineteen, early twenty twenty, and we were able to get posters to about, um, ninety percent of the hotels in the area. And we were also checking to see if they were, are, if they were posting. And unfortunately, less than fifty percent are actually posting the notices.
Okay, um, Madam Mayor and, um, city manager, can we make sure our code enforcement officer, um, runs around to make sure our hotels have that up, please?
Excellent idea. Thank you, Councilwoman. Yep. Any comments from the public? Okay, thank you, Ms. Estes. Um, and please send us that further information. In fact, you might want to send us a couple of those, sign it, the, the appropriate signage. If code enforcement is going to go out, it would be helpful if they had the, the signage, they could hand it off right then and there.
Will do. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay, um, here's the last one. And, and to everyone in Millbrae who is watching, um, it has been quite, uh, beginning of twenty twenty-one, a year that we are all hoping that we will be moving past, uh, twenty twenty. With that, the city of Millbrae, California proclaims, whereas the Millbrae City Council supports the people's right to peacefully assemble and exercise their First Amendment right to freedom of speech. And whereas peaceful political protest has a long and consequential history in this country and has contributed to making the United States of America a better and more just nation. And whereas during this past year, violence has erupted during political demonstrations and protests, causing serious harm to persons and the destruction of property. And whereas the violence, as witnessed in the January sixth, twenty twenty-one domestic terror attack on Capitol Hill, delayed the certification of the electoral vote, threatened the lives of members of the US Congress, the vice president, and law enforcement officers, and led to at least five deaths and countless injuries. And whereas the attack was incited in an attempt to overturn the presidential results of a fair and free election. And whereas the actions of this mob were not just criminal and lawless, they constituted a direct attack upon our democracy and undermines the very political and social causes that they profess to support. And whereas political violence is strongly condemned by all responsible persons, regardless of party affiliation. We, now, now, therefore, we, the members of Millbrae City Council, do hereby strongly condemn any and all violence against the US Congress that harms persons or property, as violence in any form has no place in our democratic system of government and should never be tolerated. Be it further resolved that the city of Millbrae encourages vigorous, peaceful participation in the political process and urges all those who wish to achieve political change to respect the sanctity and security of the US Congress and pursue their change peacefully within the established political system. Um, and we don't necessarily have anyone accepting, but I will thank, um, both Councilman Ruben Hollibur, who suggested this, and Katie, Steve's, uh, Katie, Nolan-Stivoe, Katie, I hope I'm pronouncing your last name correctly, for helping to draft the language for this and for staff. Uh, if council has anything to comment on this, it's been quite a week and it's a week where I hope that we will talk about it and learn from it and heal. Uh, Councilwoman Patton?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I'm so proud that we're doing this. Thank you, Councilmember Hollibur, for bringing this up. Our democracy and every oath that we take of office to uphold the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all threats, foreign and domestic, really came to light. And I'm proud that, um, democracy held strong and our republic is still going. So thank you very much for bringing this forward.
Thank you. And other comments by council members? Um, comments from the public? Katie and/or, or Amy, you're my go-to people for collecting this. We seem to have a package on civil rights tonight. Um, in a way, it's kind of nice to celeb- to, to respect all of these tonight and to, uh, learn from the tragedy of the last week.
I'd like to say some things, Wayne.
Certainly, please. Uh, former Mayor Lee, please go ahead.
I don't mean to prolong your meeting, but I just want, Madam Mayor and member of city council, I, I just wanted to say that, uh, this is a time, um, that just reminds us that even though we have many differences uh, and political differences, even in my own family, um, we are part of one thing really important and one thing that we all agree with, and that is that we love our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, with that, um, I, I thank everyone who attended tonight for, uh, accepting, uh, commendations and proclamations. And, uh, with that, city manager, can I have you please provide us with an agenda overview at staff briefing?
It's good evening, uh, Mayor Snyder, members of the city council, Tom Lane, city manager. Uh, it's good to be back in action or in the hot seat, uh, as I, as I like to say. Uh, I hope you all have a great.
City manager, we just lost you. Or is it just me?
And I wish you all a very happy new year. And I certainly look, and I just. Can you hear me now?
I can hear you, but your voice is-
Can I hear you?
Okay, um, I think it's our system. Okay, uh, anyway, I wish you all, uh, a very happy new year and looking forward to much success in twenty twenty-one. Uh, the city remains very busy, uh, in our recreation department, our planning, the building department, uh, with inspections, uh, issues with the building permits, uh, of the force department, uh, maintaining the city. Uh, of note, uh, as the council knows, uh, we did issue, uh, permits for outdoor supply hardware, uh, for tenant improvements to occupy the vacant, uh, orchard supply hardware. Uh, we look forward to them opening up here at the end of the month. Also, Lucid Automotive, that's- Also, Lucid Automotive, that we're excited about, the electric vehicle manufacturer for their sales facility, their first actual sales facility here in the city of Millbrae. A quick update on COVID nineteen. Infection rates unfortunately continue to remain high throughout the Bay Area, California, and here in San Mateo County. As of today, San Mateo County has three percent availability for ICU beds and less than one percent, seven tenths of a percent of ICU beds are available throughout the Bay Area. This is well under the fifteen percent ICU bed availability that's mandated by the state of California before we can move out of the purple tier and reopen our restaurants for outdoor and indoor dining. This means that continue, it continues to mean that indoor and outdoor dining are restricted. But please pickup and delivery of restaurants remains open. Please support our local merchants and our local businesses. Please dine local, shop local, and let's support our local businesses for pickup and delivery in our restaurants. As of, as of right now, in San Mateo County, there are one hundred and eighty-nine people that are hospitalized with sixty-six in ICU. Total infection rate countywide to date is twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and twenty-nine. So as I said, infection rates continue to increase. And a reminder to everybody, remember the three Ws. Wear a mask, wash your hands, watch your distance, please maintain six feet of social distancing and stay home as much as possible until we can get through this. And another update on vaccines, as of yesterday, the governor did communicate a plan to speed up vaccines throughout the state of California. I will get more information at a meeting tomorrow, as, as will the city council. Once we get an update, we'll provide that out to our Millbrae community. But in the meantime, I encourage everyone to contact their local medical provider, especially if you're over the age of sixty-five or have medical conditions. The vaccines are being distributed to private medical facilities as much as they are to the county. But if you don't have medical insurance, please contact the county on a website, smchealth backslash coronavirus. So that's smchealth backslash coronavirus for additional information. So again, we hope to get information on the vaccine out to our community as quickly as possible. The city released two pieces of information last week. One was the Millbrae Community Enhancement Guide. This is a document to better serve our residents in terms of understanding our local codes, policies, procedures, and also provide information for telephone numbers and email contacts as an easy place to find information and assistance that people can reach out to the city for any information or assistance that they may have. Also, we released a document for front yard landscaping. Front yard landscaping has actually been part of the municipal code for many, many years. It just hasn't been enforced. And real quickly, the municipal code requires no more than forty percent of front yards to, to be hardscape. That includes the driveway. Sixty percent must be landscaped. Not only is it for environmental and beautification purposes over the years, because people have illegally concreted in their front yards, it's trained, it's changed our hydrology and our drainage. And, you know, as everyone knows, Millbrae is pretty much on a hill. And as that hydrology changes, especially downhill crest, Helen Drive, and a few other areas, it's, it's creating significant flooding and issues for homes that are are further down the hill. So we will be enforcing that section of the code. And we did provide that information out to, to the community. Also, during the holidays, we had the Millbrae House Decorating Contest, as we did last year. So this is the second year. Our winners this year were the Douglas Family, the Joanna Profuma Family, and Tracy Montserrat Family. So congratulations to the winners of the House Decorating Contest. That's part of the Millbrae Community Enhancement Advisory Committee Work Plan. We also have several vacancies on our Millbrae Commission and Committees. So if any resident would like to help shape the future of the city of Millbrae, there's an application process that you can find by contacting our city clerk at six five zero two five nine two four one four. Again, six five zero two five nine two four one four, or by email at etran@ci.milbrae.ca.us. That's our city clerk. You can also look at our website for further information on vacancies. But I encourage our residents to apply for these vacant commission and committee vacancies. Also, PG&E will begin replacing gas pipelines along Hillcrest this next week, starting January, January nineteenth. They'll be upgrading their gas distribution pipelines along Hillcrest between Laurel and Hazel. And so the section of this project is expected to last four to five weeks. And there'll be minor traffic delays. Residents will have continued access to their homes. But if there are any questions, people can contact either the city or PG&E. PG&E's telephone number is one eight seven seven six six zero six seven eight nine. So that, that information can also be found on the city's website. So that concludes my quick update this evening. Moving on to the agenda. Item number two, this item also includes a calendar of events and reports and bills and claims that are in the council packet. Item number three is approval of minutes. There are no minutes to approve this evening. Item number four is oral reports from city committee and commissions. We have no reports this evening. Then we move to public communication. Public communication is for any member of the public to address the city council on any item not on the agenda, and that time is limited to three minutes. We have several items on the consent calendar this evening, starting with item number five, which is our quarterly investment schedule for the first quarter of fiscal year twenty twenty-one. Item number six is to receive a report and adopt a resolution accepting the annual report on the receipt and use of our development impact fees for the year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty. Item number seven is consider adoption of a resolution for the funding agreement with Republic Urban to transfer funding obligations contained in the development agreement for the Gateway Station Project to the Veterans Affordable Housing Project and structure that as a loan agreement with Bayshore Affordable LP to provide two point eight eight million in project funding for the Veterans Affordable Housing Project. Mayor, I've received requests to remove item seven from the consent calendar. Item number eight is to consider adoption of a resolution for transportation development funding of transportation development funding agreement with Core Affordable Housing and a Central Valley Coalition for Affordable Housing, allowing the city to receive a three million dollar funding grant that will go towards bicycle lane and pedestrian improvements in the vicinity of the Gateway at Millbrae Station Project, also known as TOD two. Item number nine is to consider a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of the Third Amendment to the grant to support the Millbrae Community Television. As the city council knows, we're doing this quarter by quarter due to the coronavirus pandemic and watching our cash flow and flow of funds. Item number ten is to consider a resolution approving the Fifth Amendment for the agreement with Mr. Trent Sunahara, who is our professional services contractor for strategic communication and all of our public information. Again, just like MCTV, this is a quarter by quarter contract as we watch our cash flow and flow of funds. Item number eleven is to consider a resolution accepting the twenty twenty Larkspur Sanitary Sewer Improvement Project as complete and filing the notice of completion. Moving on, after the consent calendar, we have one public hearing item this evening, and that's item number twelve. And this public hearing item is to consider adoption of a resolution overruling the San Mateo County Association of Governments Airport Land Use Commission Determination of Inconsistency with the Airport Land Use Plan Regarding a Proposed Zoning Text Amendment to the Millbrae Stationery Specific Plan to Allow with the Conditional Use Permit Uses Up to Bio-Safety Level Two. Under New Business, item number thirteen is to review and approve the city's response to the San Mateo Ground Jury's Report Ransomware. It is not enough to think you are protected. Item number fourteen is to review and approve the city's response to the San Mateo Ground Jury Report Entitled Second Units Adding New Housing in the Neighborhoods. Item number fifteen is to consider an adoption by motion the approval of an artist and theme for a mural that we are planning to paint at the skate park. Item number sixteen is council discussion and appointments to council subcommittees. And item number seventeen is to accept by motion the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, known as the CAFR for the fiscal year two thousand nineteen, twenty. After that, it's council comments. We have no closed session this evening, and then move to adjournment. So again, Madam Mayor, item seven is requested to be pulled from the consent calendar.
Excellent. Thank you. And if I could only add one thing on the brand new Community Enhancement Guide, that is a product from the Community Enhancement Advisory Committee. I know that they have been working on this with our staff for quite some time. But I want to thank Donna Eggball, Myrna Wardo, Carol Kraselnikoff, and especially our new, one of our new members, Alex Ma, who put together that guidebook. For those, the city manager said we have openings on committees. Community Enhancement has an opening, Culture Arts has an opening. I'm not sure of the other committees. But we have two young men who are on Community Enhancement. They're both in their twenties. They are both products of the Millbrae School System, and they are kicking butt. So my thanks to Alex Ma and to Brandon Chan, who did the software and the new website for all of the city recognition of what's happening in the community program. So if you're a young person and you're thinking about getting involved, please consider applying for any of those vacancies on there. Thank you. With that, there are no, as the city manager said.
Real quick, if I may?
Please.
Madam Mayor, I also failed on this agenda to close in memory of several members of the Millbrae community. So I know that we have some council members that have made that request.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, Councilwoman.
I asked that we close in memory of Lou DeSalvatore, who was longtime Millbrae resident and also one of our senior advisory committee members and a neighbor of mine, also in memory of George Corey, who's was many of us know, and I hope that we can get some more expansive words of recognition for both, and Floyd Ganella, who contributed so amazingly to our entire region as well. Everyone, they, all three, great losses to our community. So I ask that those remembrances be more detailed and included within the record. I also request item seven be pulled. And as far as item eight goes and getting three million dollars for bike pad, I think it's time I would formally request a report on the access to our station area and how this bike pad money is going to be spent. So I think without pulling that item, it is important that we hear what's going on, please.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman. Let me go backwards a little bit. There is actually a fourth person I will add to our closing in memory. Ms. Anne Marie Gardner, very active with the Millbrae Historical Society. Her husband passed a few years ago. I worked many rummage sales with she and her husband. So we will do that at the end of the council meeting. And our city clerk is already working on more expansive remembrances that will go into the minute. So Elaine already has that well in hand. With that, approval of minutes, there are no approval of minutes. There are no oral reports. We've moved to, and I know we have one person in the audience who has a comment. This is public communication for items not on the agenda. If you could raise your hand, Elaine, our city clerk will unmute you. Please give your name and your, your address. If not, your street address, the number, please tell us the street that you live on. It helps us know where your issue is and how we can possibly help you. Thank you. So where is she?
Hope.
Mary Ellen.
Yes.
Please go ahead.
Okay.
I know you're Mary Ellen's mom.
Yes, this is Bonnie Patton. I live in the seven hundred block of Barcelona Drive. And I was inquiring to make sure that the property at the top of the hill on Barcelona, Santa Margarita or Bayview is still not being looked at as a surplus property. My next item is we need more sheriff patrols in the residential areas as, along with downtown Millbrae. For the second time in our family, we've gotten a car broken into. And it seems to be happening early mornings around three o'clock to five thirty. They broke into my car at four thirty in the morning. My alarm went off. I ran out, but the person was already gone. But we do need some more help from the sheriff's department throughout Millbrae because there's packages being stolen, Christmas decorations, cameras even being stolen. So we definitely need some more assistance. So thank you so much for listening to, to me tonight and have a good evening.
Thank you. And as was stated, council can't comment on items not on the agenda, but I'm sure the city manager has heard that.
Thank you again.
Yeah. Mayor, if I may, just, just real quick. The city council did take action not to pursue the sale of that property. So to answer the residents' question.
Good to hear. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to consent calendar. Item seven has been removed to item eight with Councilwoman Pappan. I actually have the same issue. But we'll actually get to talk about bike pedestrian when we look at council assignments. So perhaps we can circle back with that one and make sure that that work plan includes the concerns that you brought up, Councilwoman Pappan. With that, may I have a motion for the existing consent calendars to approve?
So moved, Annie Oliva.
Okay.
Pappan's second.
And that is for the approval. So Vice Mayor Oliva, Councilwoman Pappan, to approve items five, six, eight, nine, ten, and eleven. City clerk, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Holber?
Hi.
Councilmember Fong? Councilmember, I made it up. Oh, he did?
It was hard to hear. You can't really hear you, Anders.
I couldn't hear either. I saw the yes vote.
I could see a verbal, I could see you saying yes. Okay, Councilmember Pappan?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Oliva?
Hi.
Mayor Snyder?
Hi.
Consent items five, six, eight, nine, ten, and eleven passed with a vote of five to zero.
Excellent. Thank you, City Clerk. All right, staff, do you have a staff report or presentation for item number seven?
Yes, Mayor, City Council. Again, item number seven is to consider a request for the funding agreement with Republic Urban to transfer the two point eight eight million dollars in affordable housing funds to the Veterans Affairs, Veterans Affordable Housing Project developer. I'd like to introduce Ms. Darcy Smith, the city's community development director.
Hey, good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. This is not the correct presentation, so I'm not sure who's bringing this up. But we have a brief oral presentation tonight from Elisa Tierney, the city's Housing and Economic Development Manager. So she'll present it orally. So I think she's on. We just need to unmute her. Can you help?
Elaine, I'm sure is working on it.
There we go. There we go. Hello?
Welcome, Eliza. Happy New Year.
Thank you. Happy New Year to you as well. Again, I'm Elisa Tierney, and I'm the Housing and Economic Development Manager for the city, and I'll just give a very brief overview of this item. As part of the Gateway at Millbrae Station Project, also known as TOD two, the development agreement for that project between Republic Urban and the city specified that the city would pay two point eight eight million to Republic Urban to be used for the Veterans Affordable Housing Project being developed by Core Housing. And in this case, Core Housing is known as Bayshore Affordable LLC. So you might see that name as well. This two point eight eight million contribution was to be made to Republic at the time the certificate of occupancy was issued for the veterans' building. Excuse me. Instead, to assist Core in securing its financing and facilitate construction, it has requested it has requested three things of the city. One, that the contribution be made directly to Core instead of Republic. Two, that we make a payment in the form of a 55-year low-interest loan instead of just a contribution, but in the, in the form of a loan. And the third, that the payment be made at the close of the construction loan instead of waiting until issuance of Certificate of Occupancy. To facilitate these changes, the city would enter into two agreements. One is a funding agreement with Republic, which allows, so for a slight alteration of the terms of the DA, allowing the payment to be made directly to Bayshore Affordable LLC Core instead of to Republic. And also, the second would be a loan agreement between the city and Bayshore Affordable LLC specifying the terms of the loan. The resolution, if adopted, would allow the city manager to execute the agreements to affect the proposed changes I just outlined. The staff report provides more detail. So that's basically it in a nutshell. Thank you.
Okay, council questions? Councilwoman Pappan, please go.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Who is building this project?
Core Housing, in this, in this case, they have an LLC they've created for the project. Oh, and I should also add that both Chris Neal and Vince Cantori of Core are also present at the meeting and can answer questions. But in, in this, their LLC is, is been named Bayshore Affordable Housing LLC.
So why was the DA set up to pay the developer and not them to begin with? Do we know?
I think maybe better to let Mike Connorin answer those, these questions.
Yes, the, well, first of all, the development agreement is with Republic Urban, not with Core. That was simply the circumstance at the time the development agreement was negotiated.
So wait a minute then, given that, why are we asked to be paying this money upfront? I mean, that is against the development agreement, which, you know, why isn't the developer fronting this money at this point in time? And we'll pay when we agreed to pay under the development agreement?
I believe it's related to the need for the proceeds to be a loan and to be given at this time so that the bond financing for the project can occur. We might want to ask Core to explain a little bit further the, the details of the financing for this project.
Okay, before you go on there, because we were assured, I mean, I disagreed with the entire agreement. But we were assured that the financing was all, had to be this way. Absolutely had to be the way that it is in the development agreement because there was no other way to do it. Now we're asking for a change here and you're saying that, what? The city of Millbury is going to be loaning this money at what interest rate? I need a lot more explanations here, please.
Well, the, so the, the change, I, I think Elisa was clear. The change is instead of a full, just a, a straight payment of that amount, it's going to be given in the form of a loan, which helps the, the developer maximize their bond financing for the project.
Okay, wait, we're talking different things here. We just said the loan would be given to Core. I want some real specifics here. Are you giving the loan to the developer, which I would object to? Or are we giving it to Core?
Core, Core is the developer of the, of the affordable housing component of this project.
Okay, and Millbury is, how does this work then? Are we, what sort of interest rate will we be getting? When will the interest start? Um, what are the details on this? Because we're in the middle of COVID and we're being asked to modify an existing development agreement and give up millions of dollars. So please provide greater details.
The, the loan agreement is a, is a long-term loan agreement. It's to be paid with the receipts, if there are any, from the, at the, you know, from the development of the project. It's not expected that the city will be paid back for this loan, but there is a chance the city will receive something. I'd say, you know, just looking at it clearly, something is better than nothing because the original $2.88 million was going to be paid and, and there was no return for the city. So in, in that sense, it's a better deal for the city. I think the change is, is, has to do with the timing that this is a payment at this time, at the closing of the construction financing and not at the, at the issuance of the Certificate of Occupancy. I think that's really the question before you.
So to back up here, under the development agreement, it was not even going to be built for another six years? Because of the way the agreement was written, is that correct?
I believe that's correct, yes.
Okay, I find that appalling as well. Yeah, and then we say, I, I don't appreciate legal counsel's opinion here that we're offering a loan, but we probably won't get anything back for it. And we're offering it up now when the agreement clearly said that we would not be paying this until occupancy occurred. So mixed messages here that, what's, what's the story? Are we giving a loan where we're going to get money back? Or because we're giving it at least six years in advance? What, what's happening here?
So, Madam Mayor, if I may?
Please.
Perhaps these questions, you know, could be, Core, I, I think Mr. Chris Neal is in the meeting and, and perhaps Core could give a presentation as to why they're asking for the acceleration of the 2.88 payment as a loan.
And, and city manager, before we go to Core while they're getting prepared, the agreement was signed in 2018, it's now 2021. It was my understanding that should the decision go through tonight, it actually will get the project done within the next three years, not six years. Is that correct?
Well, I, let's, I agree with that, Core.
Okay, all right, Core, if you could address my question. All right. Um, if we could have the, the gentleman from Core.
Good evening, this is Chris Neal speaking, could you hear me?
You're coming in great, Chris.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Neal, sorry.
Thank you, thank you for your time this evening. Lots of very good questions. I think the exciting part is we received all the financing pulled together. So Vince Cantori is on the phone as well and he could fill in some gaps. But we have all the financing pulled together to start construction, if not next month, in early March. The project is a 14-month construction phase and so we should be moving residents into the new project by spring of next year or summer of next year, which actually may be in advance of the market rate units getting delivered. I do believe the original development agreement that I'm not an expert on, but my understanding was originally there was a commitment of funds from the city to be funded and I believe that was CFO of the affordable project. Given the complex fundings of state bonds, state credits, there's about 2 million from the county, 11 million from the state through HCD. It is typical in affordable housing for the construction lender and the tax credit equity investor to require what I'll call all the soft loans to be put into the project in advance of their monies. And I'll, in this case, I will define the soft loans as the county funds and the city funds. And so for that reason, that's why we requested the city, could the funds come in at construction loan closing? That allows the construction loan from Citibank to enter the project and the tax credit equity to come in at the construction start rather than 14 months later when the project is finished. I think since it's tied to a much more complicated development agreement that I'm not an expert on, I do believe the master developer also had another obligation to the city that was tied to that. And I think to help match the timing of funds, they agreed to make another contribution to the city earlier as well to offset the different timing of the funds. Did that address most of the questions?
Mayor, if I may, Chris, it might be helpful, you know, just to explain to the council clearly why you're asking for the acceleration of the 2.88 million. And, and just for information for you, the development agreement states that the city will contribute to the affordable housing project, as you had mentioned, at Certificates of Occupancy. So I think to explain, you know, why, why now and you know, how does, you know, why, why are you making this request now?
The request is made now, so when the DA was signed, we didn't have our, our bonds or our credits, our investor or our lenders. We secured those when we received our bonds. So we received our bonds in, in October of this year. And it's typical in the structuring that the construction lender wants all the other soft money into the project before they, they, they put their funds in. So the reason we, we put forth the request is to, is to satisfy the request of the tax credit investor and the construction lender. By, by bringing in the funds earlier, it enables us to close, close the transaction, which another, another asset of the project, it's bringing $3 million to the city of Millbury on for the bike ped improvements. It's also bringing money to Bar and to other resources. So those were the reasons that the request was made.
Madam Mayor?
We all have-
One second, Councilwoman. Vice Mayor, if, if you don't mind, Councilwoman Pappan, Vice Mayor Oliva, and then Councilman Oliver. Please go ahead, Vice Mayor.
I just want to, I just want to make this clear because I, I want to be sure to myself. We already committed these funds, is that correct? And by us escalating the process and by us doing this now, will we get affordable housing quicker? I guess that would be a question for Chris.
Yes, by making this change now, construction starts in, in what, six to eight weeks? So we, we need to start construction no later than the second week of March. So this gets construction started in the next two months. And the good news is since there's no structured parking, it's a very quick construction process. So next summer will be, we'll have a ribbon cutting and be moving people in.
So when, is it, is it pretty simultaneous to the hotel?
I apologize, I don't know the construction schedule of the hotel.
You, what can you, what can you relate it to in, in, in reference to being completed at the site?
Well, I think the site's been under construction for about a year, right?
No, I mean, if you're saying that this will be completed within 18 months or so?
Correct, within 14 months. The construction duration of the senior affordable project is a 14-month construction period.
What else will be completed at that time?
Maybe, maybe I could help here, Mayor, if I may. I, I don't think anything, Vice Mayor, will be completed at that time. I think that the-
So this project, this project, this project, the veterans' housing that we argued years back of being completed last, may be first.
I think that's correct. The market rate housing will be completed at the end of 2022, same with the office. And I think the hotel will shortly follow. It's all, all of the four components are under construction.
Millbury will have affordable housing in the middle of a pandemic before anybody else. I love it. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilman Oliver.
So thank you, Mr. Neal, that construction timeline is very encouraging and I think it's something we would like to see. My question for you is how can you assure that to the council? Because you're asking for a big lift from us right now in terms of putting this money upfront as opposed to later on. Would it be possible to, you know, as, as part of this agreement, to amend the development agreement to speed up the timeline of the affordable housing component?
Sorry, sorry, could you restate the question?
I didn't quite follow what the question was. Sorry, sorry, it's not coming through. My question for you is how can you assure that to us? Because right now, i- it sounds like a very promising timeline that you're proposing 14 months, starting in March or April of this year. But according to the development agreement, you have up until, I think you have about six years to complete the project. And so if you're asking for the money upfront, I, we would like some assurances from you that this timeline that you're presenting to us is a real timeline. And not a bait and switch.
So thank, thank you for clarifying the question, I appreciate that. I believe that, I mean, I believe there's a completion guarantee that's tied with the project. I'd say the good news is that in addition to, in addition to the city being urgent, wanting to see the project completed on time, as you illustrated, we'll now have, the County Samitea will have a similar loan in the same form to, to, of 2 million and wanting to make sure it gets done in the, in the 14-month duration. A construction loan that wants it to get done in the 14-month duration. A, an equity investor who wants it to get done in the same 14-month duration. And to bring in the state funds, the ASIC grant, which leads to, which is part of the $3 million for the pet and bike improvements, they also want it to get done within the, the 14-month duration. So I believe there's probably a completion guarantee that's tied to that that could ensure that it gets done on the current, on, on whatever the schedule is for the affordable project.
Staff, could you help me to follow up on Councilman Oliver? Is that actually written into each agreement with each of those entities when they, when Core receives the funds? Is that the process?
Mayor, I, I don't have that information, so if Mr. Neal or, I don't know if his legal counsel's on the call, can provide that information to us as part of the other lenders, then, then we'd be happy to.
And can that be codified in, into the development agreement? Because right now, the timeline is up to six years.
Correct. We, we really do not want to alter the development agreement at this point. That requires, you know, procedurally, that's difficult. We, we perhaps could build some timelines into the loan agreement, which is more specific to this transaction. I, I do think there's, there's a number of, already have some constraints on them to, to develop the, the, the project within that fixed timeline. But we, I think we can certainly do that in our own agreement with this, with the affordable housing developer.
Thank you.
So Mr. Connorin, if I may speak to address the, the Councilmember Oliver's question. I, I, my, my, my council is on the phone. Is either Steve Ryan or Miriam, are either of you available? Steve? So yes, Steve, if you could address, what, what could we provide in the loan agreement that might address the concern of Councilmember Oliver and other council members about the timeline and the security of the, of the city's money?
Hi, this is Steve Ryan, Chris Neal's counsel. I, my internet is a little fuzzy right now, so I hope you can hear me.
You're coming in fine.
As Chris Neal indicated, there's five or six different levels of financing that we're bringing together in a very complicated transaction that if we don't use, we're all going to not have it available again. And this is a scarce resource, so we really need to hopefully be able to move forward with this. Each one of those sources, such as the tax credits that Chris Neal mentioned, the tax exempt bonds, all of those carry with it requirements of when we need to complete, which are all much sooner than what your development agreement provides. And it would, it would certainly be fine to have the agreement with the city provide for a similar timeline so that we're all on the same page, but there-
We just lost you, Mr. Ryan. Mr. Ryan, you're muted, at least for me. Am I the only one that can't hear him?
No.
No, his mic went out.
Perhaps Miriam. Mary, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Recognizing Miriam Sundag, please go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
You're coming in loud, loud and clear.
Great, great. So I think, as Steve was saying, there are, there are multiple sources, multiple levels of financing here, each of which require completion on a much shorter timeline than the development agreement. And adding language to the loan agreement tying, tying to the same timeline as, you know, the senior lenders are requiring. I don't think, I don't think any of our senior lenders would object to that as it's the same requirements as they would have. And it's, it would be perfectly reasonable to include here. And I, I would hope that that would answer the councilman's concern.
So Councilman Oliver, does that answer your question?
Yes, yes, it does, thank you.
Thank you, and I'm sorry I interrupted you. Councilman Fong? Please go. If you're speaking, I can't hear you. Elaine, for me, he looks like he's unmuted, but-
Councilmember Fong, we can't hear you at all. I don't know if you're, you're having connection issue with the headset you're using.
We love Zoom. Um, in the effort of time, Councilwoman Pappan, did you have additional questions? Or did any of that help answer your concerns while we're waiting for Mr. Fung to return?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I wasn't finished to begin with.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so do you have the county funding at this point in time, Chris?
We have the commitment from the county. We had three applications to the county for a little total of, over a little 2, $2 million. And we're going through the same process with them, um, to sign the loan agreement at the closing in February or early March.
If we are getting into a loan agreement, I agree with Councilmember Holibur. We must have a completion guarantee, uh, at this point in time. Additionally, is this not then a major modification of the current development agreement? Our council has said we're not changing the development agreement. Uh, Pierce, this is, what does this do to the timeline of the current development agreement? Because if I remember correctly, the hotel was supposed to be finished at a specific point in time as to the development. So that's the second question. Third question is that this, um, arrangement has nothing to do with the bike ped money. So I don't know why this keeps coming up here. We were supposed to get a, uh, contribution to the community center or the recreation center, not the money we just approved tonight. So I'm, I'm not sure where that association.
Councilwoman Pappan, on the bike money, that was additional monies that came in specifically for bicycle improvements. If I remember correctly, it's to improve along Aviador, to put a separated bike lane and new vegetation.
But what I'm saying is that this has nothing to do with the development agreement.
No, but it came via the paperwork.
I understand that. That's what I'm trying to point out.
You, you interrupted me. It came through. It, it came through the paperwork that Core was working on. And it was part of a package that we did well after the 2018 springtime approvals. But, uh, Mr. Neal, can you explain that? Or Mr. Conneren?
Uh, I was going to address the other question. We are not amending or changing the development agreement. We are simply, the agreement with Republic simply acknowledges that if we make this payment to, to, uh, to Core, the Republic will consider that our obligation to pay them under development agreement is satisfied. So we are not amending the development agreement. If in this loan agreement, we wish to, you know, have them specify a timeline for completion, we will do that. That does not affect the terms of the development agreement. If we want to make a separate agreement with this developer for them to develop, to, you know, provide the housing on a more expedited basis in exchange for us making this payment at this time, it's, we're, we can certainly do that outside of the development agreement. That's the intent.
And what was the timing of the hotel under the current agreement?
It's supposed to be started, it, it's a little hard to explain, but it's, it's so many months out. It's basically three years after they start the, uh, after they start the infrastructure improvements, I believe.
So, uh, Mayor, if I may, it's 28 months, uh, after, um, the issuance of the construction permit. So, um, that was issued in, uh, June of 2020. So, um, so four months after June, um, October of 2022. So October of 2022, per the development agreement, um, the hotel must be completed.
Or started, I think.
No, completed.
Oh, okay.
Can you all hear me now?
Yeah.
Um, hang on, Councilman Fung, sorry to, to put Gina back in. Um, Councilwoman Pappan, do you have some additional comments or can I call on Councilman Fung?
I think I'm done for now. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you, uh, Councilwoman. Councilman Fung, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Mr. Neal or Mr. Ryan, uh, you mentioned a little earlier that you have a relatively complex financing model uh, for this, um, veteran housing, which is 80 units. Um, you know, we're all smart people. It took us through a little bit about, you know, because knowing the fact that we've, uh, had an agreement long ago on the DA, specifying and stipulating to the fact that 2.88 million will be paid at the end of the construction, where we have certification of occupancy, which essentially guarantees the completion of these affordable housing prior to these 2.88 million being transferred. Now you're asking this in advance. Um, tell us why, uh, how the entire financing model work? And how does that 2.8 fit into that overall model, if you can?
So, uh, Mr. Councilmember, so the, the financing for affordable housing, um, we rely on state funds, which are tax exempt bonds, which you now have to compete for. It's a limited resource and we, we earned a bond allocation last fall. And that, that, um, correlates to your construction loan and your permanent debt. Um, and then you also earn and compete for tax credits, federal tax credits. And with those tax credits, you go and attract a tax credit equity investor. So combined, those two make up maybe 80%, uh, 60% plus or minus of the total project cost. So there's a gap. And so typically what happens is you have to go and apply for, for local funds to fill the gap. And the reason there's a gap is, you know, th- this project is being rented to, um, households making 30% of the area median income, up to 60% of the area median income. And 18 of the 80 units have project-based VASH vouchers, um, which will be available to veterans. And the entire project is a veterans preference. As an aside, Mr. Councilmember, this was a little bit inspired. We completed a 40-unit pro- veterans project in Menlo Park for veterans and veterans at risk of homelessness. So it was, we were leveraging some of that experience for this project. So there's a gap of about $16 million. And so gratefully, with contributions from the city of, um, Millbrae for approximately $3 million, the county made a contribution of approximately $2 million. And then we applied to the state that made a loan, it's called, uh, um, uh, it's a sustainable grant. What's, what, what does the acronym stand for? I can't remember. I apologize off the top of my head. But it was an $11 million loan to the project. Um, and in addition to bringing in an $11 million loan for the housing project, we competed and earned about $5 million for additional projects. Those additional projects contributed to about $2 million to Bart to extend their trail track at the Millbrae station. And approximately $3 million in grant money to the city of Millbrae, um, for the bike and pet improvements. So, so, um, those are the total dollars that are brought to, brought to the project as part of the housing. The reason why we made the request now is to bring in the construction lender and bring in the tax credit equity investor. They like to see as much of that soft money in before they bring in the, before they put their money in. So we're putting a portion of the tax credit equity investor in, all the county money will be in. And they requested that all the city money be in at the construction loan closing. What it has done with Millbrae's early commitment to the project of 3 million, that effectively was, was leveraged to a total of almost $50 million, um, is, is roughly the total project cost. So by making that early commitment on for about 3 million, we were able, we were able to take that, get county contribution, get state contribution, get state, get, uh, tax exempt bonds and federal credits to assemble the full 50 million plus or minus to build the project. Did that answer your question?
In, in a grand scheme of things, yes. And then, but you know, I, I think there was a lot of detail in there that we all, you know, would probably like to get some details on. Uh, and the key point here is why that 2.8 million now instead of later on? And how it changes the whole paradigm of things? And do you need them upfront immediately at the closing of your construction loan? Because knowing the fact that construction loans are usually being drawn out, uh, as the construction progresses, can this be a part of that? Or does it have to be the full amount, 2.88 upfront when closing?
The, the full on, the fuller dollar goes in at closing. Whatever funds of the cities and the counties that don't get dispersed at closing will get held by a trustee, which is usually the construction lender. And that is part of the construction draw process. Um, they will release the remaining soft funds until all those funds are released. And then, and then the construction loan will start being drawn down. I think originally it was, to your point, it was going to be a grant of funds at completion. Um, what it's now, it's a loan at construction start. I believe someone made a question, is there interest? So it will accrue interest during construction. The interest will accrue. So when we get to a permanent conversion, when it, when it converts from a construction loan to a permanent loan, it'll be a larger loan amount because it'll be a combination of both the original 2.88 plus accrued interest. And then that accrued interest will make up the 55-year loan principal.
So am I understanding correctly that this 2.88 million will be deposited somehow, locked into some sort of a, a bank-controlled account as part of your loan draw as you can, as you begin and continue your construction?
Correct. If it doesn't get dispersed at the closing for cost, it'll be held in a trust account, typically our construction lender, yes.
Which is Citibank in this case.
Correct.
Okay, so they will basic, they will basically use that money to fund your construction in the same way they will give you the, the, the construction funding as your construction progress?
Correct.
Okay, and, uh, and you're saying that the, the, the city will receive a certain amount of interest as part of that 2.88 million? Could you elaborate on that?
It will be accrued interest. So during the construction period, it won't be paid, but it will be accrued. And so, um, I believe it's around 2%. I don't have it in front of me at the top of, you know, I don't know it off the top of my head. Um, and so it'll, it'll start off as a construction note of 2.88 million. It'll accrue interest. And then when it converts to a permanent loan, I believe, that accrued interest gets added to that. So the face value of the permanent loan will be slightly higher. It'll be the sum of the original proceeds plus the accrued interest.
Okay, uh, um, Council, um, Michael Conneren, sorry. Uh, what, so what does that whole agreement look like? And then what does it look like when the construction completes? Because it sounds like, based on what Mr. Chris Neal is saying, that 2.88 million actually accrues interest. And at the end of that construction, they will owe us more than 2.88 million, because it'll be 2.88 million plus the interest. And that will be final loan amount. Uh, but you mentioned earlier that we may not get the money back. So how does it work? I, you know, I think we're somewhat confused there.
Um, I think the developer may be able to answer that more detail. But essentially, this is a, a loan mechanism that's been traditionally used in the redevelopment context. And again, it's, it's, uh, there's a number of other parties that are ahead of us to get repaid, uh, from the proceeds of the project. This is a low-income housing project, so it is not necessarily going to turn a large profit. I, I, I think from the city's perspective, I think we're happy with anything we get back. I think we do want to monitor the, the performance and, and the finances as this proceeds. Um, but the idea is that something is better than the nothing we were going to get back from the 2.88 million dollar payment. So.
But we already committed that money. We, it's not like it's back to us.
Correct. So, so we may get some back.
Yeah.
Put back in our housing fund. But that's really not the point of this. The point of this is to help because all this financing in order, and, and, and perhaps the developer can explain a little more about just sort of the timing on this. I mean, you've qualified for some competitive financing mechanisms that are not going to be around forever, right? So I mean, this is a, there's an importance of getting this closed at this time with the funds that you've cobbled together. And, and that's sort of the challenge of this type of development is that it's, it takes a lot of effort and maybe some luck to be able to assemble all these different pieces of money. This isn't just going to a bank and getting a straight loan, you know, for, for 90% of the, 80% of the value of the project. This is, you know, this is a, you know, it's a, it's a difficult, uh, effort in order to put all these pieces together. And we're simply participating as one of those pieces in order to make this project work and work on a schedule that's ahead of what we had expected.
So Councilman, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Neal, go ahead.
No, I didn't mean to interrupt. Go ahead.
No, I was just asking if Councilman Fung, um, did you have any further questions than, um, Council, Vice Mayor Oliva? And then, uh, Councilwoman Pappan?
Right, I mean, so, but I think what my touch on that a little bit earlier, that, uh, when Councilmember Holibur was asked about the timeline, uh, you know, several different construction loans, um, and some of the other financing model that you have does stipulate a strict timeline of construction, which you said is 14 months, is that correct, Mr. Chris Neal?
Yes, sir. Our construction schedule was a 14-month construction schedule to build the 80-unit, uh, veterans, uh, project.
And then, uh, the timeline of a construction loan from Citibank, is that the same or is it longer?
It's, it's longer, right? So that's the 14 months of the construction period, then there's a lease-up period. So yes, so the construction, the construction loan is longer to allow for a lease-up period, a stabilization, a stabilization period, and then, and then to convert. So it's probably around a two-year construction loan in total.
And then eventually it turns into some sort of a takeout loan where you would refinance the entire building?
So, no, good question. So what, um, we have, we will have a permanent loan committed. So Citibank is going to provide us both a construction loan and a permanent loan. And so when we complete construction after 14 months and we lease it up over the next four or five months, and then we have a stabilized, um, apartment community, um, we will convert to the permanent loan. So what that means is we, we've met, we've met our milestones. So the rest of the tax credit equity will come into the project and the permanent loan from Citibank comes in the project. And that source pays off the construction loan from Citibank.
Right. Okay, all right.
Okay, you're, you're, no further questions, Councilman Fung?
Uh, probably maybe a little later, but, uh, that's.
Okay, uh, Vice Mayor Oliva?
Uh, I, I'm, I'm a little confused. I mean, I, I appreciate all the questions and the, and the, and the intricate, wonderings of why we want it now, but i- am I missing something here? Is this kind of like an opportunity? Because we're going to finish this quicker than we anticipated? Um, I guess City Manager, if you could help me with that question, is this a? I need some advice here because I, I don't see, I don't see the wrongdoings here. I see, I see opportunity.
City Manager?
I, I guess the response to that, um, as, as a developer has said, that, um, this would allow them to bring to market the affordable housing project, um, two to three years sooner than what the development agreement actually allows for. Development agreement allows that vertical.
City Manager, I think we lost you.
I, I was just thinking that that was like a fear of, of the unknown, um, prior to, to the DA here that we, we all got to. We all worried that this was not going to get done. And here we are, you know, with the opportunity, and I, I'm not trying to say it's like, you know, celebration here. Because I, I respect all the questions and the concerns here, but I think that, that, I don't, I, I think we need to cross the Ts and dot the Is, and let's move on with this, this agenda item.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor. Um, I actually agree with you. Uh, Councilwoman Pappan, last set of questions, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A couple of things, uh, I think we do whatever agreement, again, I want to reiterate, must have a completion guarantee. What is this interest rate we haven't been clear on? Um, yes, we applaud the idea of getting stuff done early. That's not the issue here. The issue is really, in item eight, staff has said Core now obtained all necessary financing for their project. And yet we are hearing that is not in fact the case. What happens if Core runs short of their financing? Who is going to pick up the slack on that? And then the final question is, Chris mentioned something about extending Bart's tracks. Where did, where did that come from? Um, you know, uh, we need clarification, please.
So Mayor, if I, I, well, two things for the record. Um, I think Core, and they can correct me if I'm wrong, does have all of their financing in place.
Doesn't sound that way.
And two, I, I, I think Core was saying that the extension of pedestrian and bicycle access and pass um, are extended to provide better pedestrian and bicycle access to the Bart tracks. The Bart, the Bart tracks are not being extended.
There's a tail track being built.
A what?
A tail track.
What is that?
It's a, it's a, it's not a service, it's a, it's like an additional parking lane for their trains. So it's, it's being funded out of this general, the, the, this on money that's giving the city, the $3 million for the bike and pet improvements is also giving some money to Bart for a project that they are undertaking.
Okay, well.
I mean, I, I was, I was not aware of that.
Yeah, I'm not aware of that either, and I'm very disturbed about this. I'm not, I can't vote for this if we're not knowing the details of what's happening.
Affordable housing money is going to extend Bart tracks for Bart purpose?
No.
May, may I, may I jump in?
Eliza, please.
So, so for the ASIC, which is the Affordable Housing Sustainable Communities Program of the state, it has both loan and grant components. Uh, one of the things about the, the whole process of that. Uh, one of the things about the the whole process of that is that the uh application is very, very complex and time consuming. And um it happened that Vince Cantori, Chris and their team were planning on eventually applying for ASIC. But suddenly, in the year that we ended up actually applying and you all approved the application the beginning of 2019, it was because BART decided at that time to do this tail track system of um allowing, I I guess Key can explain the fundamentals more, but the upshot is that it would mean that it would count toward this project and it would make a very, very high scoring result. And so all of a sudden at the last minute, uh, Core decided to apply one year early for ASIC funding, knowing that we would be a very high scorer between the transit station, between BART, between our ped and bike improvements and their project, Veterans Project. And sure enough, it did. It was the highest scoring in the region and 18 million was uh was secured, of which 12 million is going to the project as a loan and 6 million is out the door in grant funding, 3 million of which is coming to us. So a number of the finance, yeah.
Mayor, I mean, we're really talking about item number eight.
Yeah.
Now I understand what now I understand what the council members question is. Item number eight, that grant funding goes to the item number seven, just just for clarification. And we're really getting into item number eight discussion.
Well, okay, so I don't want to, I don't want to get into item number eight. I I want to know it was brought up that BART is extending their tracks and that is.
City Manager, you're cutting in and out.
I was I was waiting for Councilman.
Councilwoman Pappen is also freezing on my screen. I don't know if it's me. Councilwoman Pappen, are you okay now? You look like you're moving.
I I. It's grand is no city money, no city.
Okay, if we could go back to using raising hands, I'm sorry, everybody's voices are cutting out. City Clerk Elaine and I went over what happens if it's my machine that's freezing everyone, but right now, um, let me see if I can summarize. We we've answered the construction timeline at 14 months. The $3 million to the city for BPAC. Initially, when I reported out at CCG BPAC on this, the money that went to BART was also for bike pedestrian improvements along the BART station. That does sound like there's a change, but I'm not sure we have any say in that change. Um, at least in terms of the funding for affordable housing. That may not mean that we don't have another way to say no, Bart, you cannot take even more city of Milbrae land for additional tracks. City Manager, can we comment on that or is it two totally separate things?
I I I would look to Mike Connor and see if you comment on it all. My my point was the confusion.
It's a separate issue.
Of the gentleman from Course comment about the extension of the BART.
Okay, I believe Mr. Conneran did. Please say that again, Mr. Conneran.
It it's a separate issue. It is more related to. Bart's getting some money for the same.
I'm sorry, I do apologize. We're experiencing some um technical difficulties over here, but I'm not sure if you are you guys hearing like are am I delayed at all or?
No, you're in you're in real time, City Clerk. The City Manager is delayed. I've been watching his voice come after his lips. So there is a a slight delay with the City Manager. Uh, City Manager, if you can hold off, let's let Mr. Conneran finish and then we'll come right back to you, City Manager.
And Mayor, my hand's been up for a while.
I I saw that. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you.
As I understand it, the there's a the the separate grant program, which was for the city's component of it was item eight. Bart is getting some money for a tail track project. I don't know that much about it, but I think they're doing it on their own property. Um, but that's not related to this, so it's really not appropriate to discuss it. If they have questions, I think we can have the City Manager uh research that and report back to you as to what's involved with that.
That sounds like a good plan for me. City Manager, do you concur?
We we'd be happy to do that.
I think that was an agreement, although you had out. Let me, Vice Mayor Oliva, please go.
Yeah.
Please speak.
I was just saying that with regards to the BART uh tail lines, whatever we're talking about, it's irrelevant to what we have on the agenda to vote for. And I would like to uh have a timeline as uh Councilmember Hollibur had suggested, and I'd like to call for the question.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, could I? I'd like to just make one clarification, just sort of terminology. We we spoke of a completion guarantee for this project. The completion is going to be guaranteed through a performance bond and a payment bond. Um, and that's going to be issued as part of the the construction financing. It's a requirement of their lender that there be a surety who's going to guarantee that once the project is started, it is going to be completed. Um, city's familiar with this process. Our library, uh, our contractor went belly up midway through the construction of the city library. We exercise that our rights under the surety bond and that project was completed with a mere six week delay. So um, this is the customary way that the city and others uh ensure that their projects are completed. So um, that will be part of this project. The completion of the project will be guaranteed. Uh, you know, once the construction financing is closed.
Thank you, Mr. Conneran. I made a mistake. I did not open this up for public comment. I see one public comment. City, uh, Elaine, do you see any other public comment? Um, before I know that Vice Mayor Oliva has called the question, uh, Vice Mayor, would you allow public comment and then we can go into?
Absolutely.
Okay, very good. Um, Elaine, if you could please unmute uh former Mayor Lee.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just have a quick question. Did does the veteran housing count towards the the uh density bonus?
Thank you.
Staff?
It counts towards our arena housing numbers. I think that's really the question. There's not been a density bonus requested. There's a limit on this area because of the airport. Uh, this entire project was constrained in terms of the heights to which it could be constructed. So uh, there's really not an opportunity for a density bonus to come into play. They were approved at the level of construction that they are. So but I think the question is probably, does it help? And it certainly does help with our our regional housing numbers. Uh, and you know, provides some very difficult to obtain low income housing, which is a very good thing for the city.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, Councilman Hollibur, would you mind if I allow um the developer, Republic Urban Developer Michael Van Avery to go ahead of you? I'm hoping then you might be seconding the motion. But, um, Mr. Van Avery, please go ahead.
Uh, good evening, good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the Milbrae City Council. This is Michael Van Avery, President and CEO, coming to you live from San Jose, California. I am disturbed by a lot of the comments that I hear. This is uh promises made, promises kept. And we have delivered now what will be a $46 million project on top of $450 million of economic development for the city of Milbrae. And yes, the hotel will be finished well in advance of any of our development agreement timelines. In addition, we have provided the city since the inception of our development agreement quarterly reports to staff that detail in specifics, timelines, financing updates and everything that we've done. We have worked extremely hard. This is an absolute win for the citizens of Milbrae. And forgive me in my tone, but the rhetoric that we have in front of us here is about positive. It's about delivering 80 units of much needed affordable housing in a pandemic for veterans. The people that serve this country that deserve the right to have housing, which we've, again, promises made, promises kept. I appreciate the chance to address you. I've been listening here in the background. Core company should be applauded. The tax credit rounds that were are are highly competitive to the state of California. There are literally tens of projects each round that are denied that are are extremely valuable to the communities that they're in. And yet despite that, this project has ranked at the top both on the tax credit rounds, on the cap and trade grants that brought in $60 million that are going for public projects in including here in Milbrae to connect our Bay Trail and to make this literally the best TOD project on the West Coast. So without further ado, I would urge you to please move forward and stop wasting time and get this deal done so we can again deliver on our development agreement five years in advance of this. Promises made, promises kept. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Van Avery. Uh, Councilman Hollibur.
Uh, yes, thank you. Uh, I I believe Vice Mayor's motion, what she was alluding to was uh to include a timeline for um completion within the loan agreement, which I believe representatives from Core and their legal counsel uh have agreed to do uh after this meeting. Um, so with that, I would second that motion.
Thank you. So we have on the floor a motion by Vice Mayor Oliva, seconded by Councilman Hollibur. Any last comments? Please raise your hand. Seeing none, I want to say.
Miss Miss Mayor, are we? Did we include the um timing thing? Is that also?
Yes, that's Vice Mayor, the Vice Mayor and and Councilman Hollibur approved on there. Okay, I don't see any other council members' hands raised. Um, Core, I I think this is exciting. I'm so glad to see that it's speeding up. I have been going down to the BART parking lot to watch the projects about every couple of weeks now because there's so much change. I look forward to this motion. So with that, uh, City Clerk, can you call the call the vote?
Councilmember Hollibur?
Aye.
Councilmember Fung?
Aye.
Councilmember Pappen?
You muted.
Aye. Vice Mayor Oliva?
Aye.
Mayor Snyder?
Aye.
Consider item passed with a vote of five to zero with amendments with to include timeline.
And I would only add that I believe the City Manager has agrees to go back and check with what BART is going to do with their grant money for improvements and get back to the City Council on that. I think all of us would be very interested with what they're going to do. Okay, all right, moving on. And and uh to everybody involved, thank you. My training through the Housing Leadership Council is it is really complicated to put together affordable housing funding. Congratulations. Thank you for all your hard work and yay, groundbreaking in a year and a half, something to look forward to.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, I believe we're moving on to the public hearing. If I could have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I I heard um Councilwoman Pappen before Mr. Fung. She's quick on her feet there. Um, with that, may we have a vote for opening the public hearing?
Councilmember Hollibur?
Aye.
Councilmember Fung?
Aye.
Councilmember Pappen?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Oliva?
Aye.
Mayor Snyder?
Aye.
Public hearing is open.
Thank you. And staff, do you have a report?
Uh, Madam Mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Hollibur.
Yes, I thank you. Um, I had, after consulting with the legal counsel, I decided to recuse myself from this item due to my day job working as a consultant for the city county of San Francisco, often working on airport related items. And the airport has petitioned the city regarding their petition regarding their position um on the MSASP amendment. So while there isn't really a strict financial interest, I believe it would be in the best interest of myself and the city to recuse myself from this item at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Hollibur.
Leaving the meeting and maybe if the City Manager, let me know when to come back in.
Thank you. Elaine and I talked about how we could bring you back in. And I believe Elaine, are you going to send him an email or a text? Or a call?
I will send him an email.
You'll set, we'll send you an email when you can. And thank you, Councilman Hollibur, for letting me know. Okay, so it is a staff presentation time. On agenda item 12.
Mayor, I'd like to again introduce our Community Development Director, uh, Ms. Darcy Smith for a staff presentation. Um, also, there were uh three letters that the city received regarding this project that you all have in your packet.
Yeah, good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. Again, Darcy Smith, Community Development Director for Milbrae. And I wanted to introduce this item, but the the bulk of the work was done by our excellent Planning Division. And as you might know, this has been underway since the summer, so they've been hard at work with this text amendment. There were many meetings which will be covered in detail here. So first, Rosco Mata, our Planning Manager, just give a brief introduction, but the Assistant Planner Nestor Guarba, who's been putting in the uh huge, the huge, huge effort to get this um ready for tonight's meeting and through all the series of meetings, we'll be making the staff presentation. But we're all three of us, along with the City Manager Williams and Council, are available to answer any questions after the presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Miss. If that's Mr. Rock.
He's trying, yeah, he's also having some technical difficulties, but he's there at City Hall, so he's uh he's.
I can see his lips moving.
Good evening. Can you guys hear me okay?
There you go.
Okay, great. Thank you. Uh, thank you, uh, Ms. Smith. Mayor Schneider and City Council Members, I'm Rosco Mata, Planning Manager with the Community Development Department. I'll be introducing this item, number 12, which is to uh to your public hearing to consider. One, a resolution overruling the San Mateo City County Association of Government Airport Land Use Commission Determination of Inconsistency with the Airport Land Use Plan Regarding a Proposed Zoning Text Amendment to the MSASP to allow with a conditional use permit uses up to biosafety level two in the transit oriented development overlay zone portion of South Milbrae Avenue. Excuse me. And two, a resolution adopting a text amendment to the Milbrae Station Area Specific Plan MSASP to allow with a condition use permit certain biotechnology uses in the transit oriented development district zone south of Milbrae Avenue. Staff presentation will be conducted by Nestor Guavera. This is a planner and project manager for this effort. After this presentation, we are available to answer any questions. Deputy City Attorney Michael Connor and City Manager also have contributed to this report and also are available to answer any questions. I'd like to note that uh after the preparation of the staff report and the attachments, staff received three separate common letters on this MSASP amendment. Received a letter from the San Francisco Airline Airport Affairs Committee, Finn Capital and Bonneville Labs. These letters have been distributed to the City Council and made part of the public record. Uh, with that, I will hand the presentation over to Nestor Guavera.
Uh, good evenings, council members. Um, thank you, Rosco. We've been having a few technical difficulties, but hopefully we're good from here. Um, so jumping straight into some background information, the Milbrae Station Area Specific Plan update was adopted by City Council back in January 2016. Uh, it guides future developments in the areas surrounding the Milbrae Station. Um, and it supports development of a mix of uses through five planning zones and one overlay zone. Um, this map here just shows the Milbrae Station Area Specific Plan or the area. The red, the red dashed line here just shows of the um specific plan area and then the buildings in the red there are the BART stations. Um, like I mentioned, there's a variety of planning zones in the MSASP. These are the TOD zone, transit oriented development, the residential mixed use zone, employment center, light industrial, retail, commercial, public facilities, and the residential overlay zone. Um, each zone allows a specific mix of land uses that are either permitted by rights or through a conditional use permit per table 5.1. And this map here shows the different zones that I just I just mentioned. Um, as you see, the TOD zone is the one that contains the Milbrae BART counting station. The proposed specific plan amendment, it's an amendment to table 5.1. Um, changing of changing permitted and conditionally permitted land uses to allow with an approval of a conditional use permit the following biotechnology scientific labs, tech biotech product assembly and tech biotech component manufacturing manufacturing uses only in the TOD zone portion. only in the TOD Zone portion south of Millbrae Avenue. Through the proposed specific plan amendment, we would amend the footnotes of table 5.1 to read, within SFO compatibility zones one and three, users must comply with the AOUCP policies and criteria described in policy SP2 Safety Compatibility Land Use Criteria, Table 4.2 Safety Compatibility Criteria, and policy SP3 Hazardous Uses. And it would add the footnote, within SFO compatibility zone two, hazardous uses up to biosafety level two may be allowed, subject to a conditional use permit per city of Millbrae Resolution. It would also amend footnote number four to read, Light Industrial Facilities and Safety Compatibility Zone Two of AOUCP may include hazardous uses up to biosafety level two as defined by the SFO AOUCP policy SP3 on pages 433 and 434. And it would add footnote number six that reads Biotechnology Scientific Labs, Tech Biotech Product Assembly, and Tech Biotech Component Manufacturing are allowed, excuse me, with a conditional use permit in the TOD Zone portion south of Millbrae Avenue. This map here just shows the specific zone that we're proposing for the amendment. Like I mentioned, it's the TOD section that's the section of the TOD Zone that's south of Millbrae Avenue. Consistency with the AOUCP. The Millbrae TOD Zone is in Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan safety zone. The amendment would conditionally permit Light Industrial Facilities and Safety Zone Two to include uses up to biosafety level two. Currently, they're allowed up to biosafety level one, and safety zone two. Biosafety level two involves clinical diagnostic teaching and other laboratories working with indigenous moderate-risk agents that are already present in the community. So examples of this would be influenza, HIV, Lyme disease, or salmonella. And this graphic here on the right shows the different biosafety levels going from the lower risk at the bottom of the pyramid, biosafety level one, to more higher risk up to biosafety level four. The Safety Zone Two is designated along the extended centerline of each runway, beginning at the outer edge of the runway protection zones. So here on the graphic, on the right here, you'll see the runways just east or on the bayside of 101. And then around the Millbrae Station Specific Area Plan, if you see the arrow there, I'm going around that safety. It's an area of secondary accident risk that tends to be overflown by most aircraft arrivals and departures of each runway, and safety compatibility criteria are generally based on the guidelines provided in the California Airport Land Use Planning Handbook. And other prohibited uses in Safety Zone Two, just to give some examples, would include large assemblies of gender or more people, hospitals, or critical public utilities. Some reasons for the amendment, there's property owner interest in redeveloping sites with biotech offices given proximity to other successful biotech in the San Francisco Peninsula. Biotech demand is high during the current economic climate, and it would help support the city's fiscal sustainability during the ongoing pandemic. It would support revitalization and redevelopment of aging properties and help in build out of the specific plan area. It would also aid in the city's economic development, creating jobs. And these jobs being that are close to transit could lead to increased ridership for our Caltrain, which could in turn lead to carbon emission reductions. Allowing biotechnology in the zone proposed would also satisfy multiple general plan goals and policies. Just to give a quick timeline of the public meetings that we've had up to this point, the Planning Commission held a public hearing to adopt the resolution, or adopt a resolution, recommending city council approval of the override. This passed back in August 17 of 2020. The AOUC, the Airport Land Use Commission, held a public hearing where they determined that the proposed zoning amendment was inconsistent with the Airport Land Use Plan in October 22 of 2020. The CCAG Board of Directors then met on November 12 and upheld that AOUC determination inconsistency. And the city council grew their resolution, making draft findings and directing staff to file the notice of intent to overrule the consistency determination in their November 24, 2020 meeting. And now we're here tonight, meeting to recommending approval of the MSASP amendments and the final findings. Any proposed land use policy action which includes general plan or specific plan amendments within a specified area of the influence area must be submitted to the Airport Land Use Commission for consistency determination prior to city council final action. As I mentioned earlier, the AOUC reviewed the application and determined it to be inconsistent with the comprehensive Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan. This was then reviewed and upheld by the CCAG Board of Directors, acting as the San Mateo County Airport Land Use Commission on November 12. There is a process to overrule this determination of inconsistency. Public Utilities Code Section 21676 allows the city council to override the determination of the AOUC with the following steps. One, a public meeting to consider overriding the AOUC's action. Secondly, an adoption of specific findings so the proposed action is consistent with the purposes of the Airport Land Use Commission statutes. And third, approving an override of the AOUC's determination by at least a two-thirds majority vote. Our city council did approve the resolution, making draft findings that the proposed amendment is consistent with the AOUC and directed staff to provide notice of intent to both AOUC and the Caltrans Aeronautics Division. This notice of intent was sent to both agencies on November 25 of last year, and this started a 30-day comment period for the agencies. Any city council action item would need to take place at least 45 days after November 25. The city did receive comments from both Caltrans and the SFO Airport. Comments cite Public Utilities Section 21678, which provides that if an agency overrules an airport land use plan, the airport becomes immune from claims of damage to property or personal injury related to the overall decision. The agencies both opposed the proposed zoning amendment citing inconsistency with AOUCP and concerns over public safety to residents and businesses of Millbrae. These are the specific findings for the overrule that you'll find in the packet as an attachment in your packets. Biosafety level two does not authorize respiratory or aerosolized agents, therefore does not present a materially greater risk to public safety than level two activities. The AOUCP presently authorizes level two uses in a portion of the employment center light industrial zone located immediately adjacent to the amendment area. Risk is much lower than is reflected in the Safeway Compatibility Zone maps in the AOUCP due to the low use of runways 19LR, which according to the airport are used for only 2% to 5% of landings. The amendment will minimize the public's exposure to safety hazards to the extent feasible and use permit process will allow city regulation amendments, or the amendment offers city increased flexibility to accommodate uses and demand, especially in light of the future, or of the future demand for office space being altered by the COVID pandemic. And the amendment greatly aids in the city's economic development through the ability to attract development and tenants to the Millbrae Station area, creating jobs and helping to maximize regional interest and maintaining the area occupied. And to bring it all together, a quick timeline of the override process. Step one, the city provided the notice of intent to consider the override to both the AOUC and Caltrans Aeronautics Division. This started a 35-day review period. AOUC and Caltrans then had 30 days to respond to the city's notice of intent. The CCAG Board of Directors received the resolution formally at their December board meeting. And the final step then is a city council final action of overriding with the final findings and approving the MSASP amendment. And with that said, the staff recommendation, staff recommends the city council adopt the following resolutions. One, an overrule of the San Mateo City-County Association of Governments Airport Land Use Commission determination of inconsistency with the Airport Land Use Plan regarding a proposed zoning text amendment to the MSASP to allow with a conditional use permit, uses up to biosafety level two in the Transit Oriented Development Overlay Zone portion south of Millbrae Avenue, safety compatibility zone two, and two, to amend the 2016 Millbrae Station Area Specific Plan, Table 5.1, permitted and conditionally permitted land uses to allow with a conditional use permit Biotechnology Scientific Labs, Tech Biotech Product Assembly, and Tech Biotech Component Manufacturing Uses in the TOD Overlay Zone portion south of Millbrae Avenue with the associated text amendments. That concludes the presentation. Staff is available for any questions, and legal counsel is present as well.
Thank you, Mr. Guavara. Any additional comments from staff before I open up for comments from council and then public comments? Okay, council members, any comments? Questions? I'm looking for raised hands. I think most of us have gone to no picture to save bandwidth. Okay, if there are no council, I have a couple of questions, and I'm not exactly sure who might answer it. And I'm not seeing any public hands raised yet. Please clarify, if an airplane hits any building in Millbrae, is it the carrier that's responsible or SFO that's responsible?
Well, I would refer to Mike on the liability. I think a lot goes into that. There would be an investigation. Is a pilot error? Is it, you know?
Correct.
I actually don't think that question could be answered.
Potentially both.
Without knowing more facts.
Potentially both, because it seems to me that-
The airline, and the airport. I mean, the airport, what does the airport do? They're just there. The airlines are the ones that are operating and making decisions. You know, they have, you know, maintaining the equipment, I think. The vast majority of liability would be on the airline, not on the airport.
Okay, thank you. So in my reading of both the letter from SFO and the letter from less so maybe the letter from the transportation agency is, if the city of Millbrae goes through and we build a building to the height that is specified within the airport land use parameters there, and I don't remember how many feet are allowed there, but generally it's five or seven stories, but we build it within the height, but because we have allowed a biohazard level two, if that building gets hit, they are not responsible for any damage to that building or to the buildings around that building. And is it just general damage from an airplane being hit or damage that results from a biohazard being released into the atmosphere?
I believe it is the latter.
They just, if we do this, they're saying, we're just saying, we're not responsible, and that's SFO not responsible. That does not say the individual carrier, the aircraft, the airline is exempt from being responsible for hitting a building.
That's my understanding.
Okay. To me, that's the one concern there, and I know the city manager and I talked, if we build, just for sake of argument, a five-story building there, which is about the same height as what is being built under the Gateway Project, similar in heights, different types of buildings have different heights, so if that building gets hit or if it hits the building right next door, which is in Burlingame, and that Burlingame facility can have a biohazard of three or four, that's okay, but our biohazard of two is not okay.
I believe that's correct, based on the way those zones and the restrictions are applied. Correct.
Okay. Those are my questions. I have a couple more depending on, I see Mr. or Ms., I'm sorry, Sinha. If we're with public, the public hearing is open. City Clerk, could we please unmute? Nupur Sinha, I'm sorry if I mispronounced that. Your name, my apologies.
Good evening. No, you didn't. You're good. Good evening, Mayor Schneider and council members. I'm Nupur Sinha. I'm acting planning and environmental affairs director at SFO. The airport does object to the city's consideration to overrule the AOUC's findings of incompatibility. We strongly support economic growth in our region, but not at the detriment of our neighbors' resident well-being or risk to SFO airspace or space safety compatibility. This particular transit-oriented development that we are talking about is 1,500 feet away at the end of a runway. And this is not a location for biohazard safety level two, biosafety level two use. The level, the biosafety level use is actually determined by the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services in their publication, Biosafety in Microbiological and Biomedical Laboratories. I understand that the utilization of the runway has been a topic that has been brought up, but it shouldn't be a determining factor for land use. We know firsthand, as an airport, that we need to be prepared to be ready for the unthinkable, regardless of how unlikely that circumstance is. The release of any sort of contaminant airborne or otherwise in an event of an unlikely aircraft accident will increase the local resident exposure to safety hazards. There is no doubt about that. Also, in the Millbrae findings, it states that the biosafety level uses would facilitate hosting by life science companies battling COVID virus or other maladies. While biosafety level two does not include such diseases such as COVID, it is dangerous to be permitted in laboratories, facilities at the end of airport runways nonetheless. So SFO agrees with the public agencies, CCAG, Caltrans, the airlines, as well as the associations in recommending that the city follow the AOUC determination of incompatibility for biosafety level two within the airport runway safety two zone. We are here, our staff are here, to absolutely assist in better understanding optimal uses for this area. And thank you for taking my comment.
Thank you, Ms. Sinha. Hold on, checking to see if there are other comments. Any other comments from the public? And this is my first council meeting as mayor, so if you don't mind, I'm just going to check on process. With no other comments from the public, do we keep public hearing open? Or do we keep this so that council members can directly address the representative from SFO?
But Mayor, you can move to close the public hearing.
But if we want to ask-
You can move to close the public hearing, and the council can have discussion.
Second to close.
You don't need to close the public hearing, and if there's questions of the airport representative, you can still ask those questions when the public hearing is closed.
I'm sorry, so she can still continue, we can still have a dialogue with her?
Close the public hearing.
Okay. I believe I heard, I heard a voice, I'm sorry, city manager. I heard somebody, and then I think I heard Councilman Fung on a second, but I didn't hear the motion.
Councilmember Papin moves, close public hearing.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. City Clerk, could you please call the vote, please?
Oh, yeah. Sorry, Councilmember Holibur is excused. Councilmember Fung?
Aye.
Councilmember Papin?
Aye.
Mayor Oliva?
Aye.
Mayor Schneider?
Yes.
Thank you. Public hearing is closed.
Okay, comments from council. Ms. Papin?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Two things. First and foremost, I think we do appreciate having the airport here. Thank you so much. We do hope you return when high-speed rail tries to have 5,000 people above ground, which also violates your land use. So the point is too that we're talking about biolevel two, common colds, flu, salmonella, HIV. I don't think that this is an increased risk by any way or means. South San Francisco is doing much more dangerous projects in their city, and I think they've also moved to make the exception here. One thing that everybody seems to be forgetting here, and the mayor's question as well, is the high-powered wires from PGE. Guess what? The plane's going to hit that first before it gets anywhere near our little development area here. And I don't know what it takes to get those wires down, but I think the airport and everybody- And I don't know what it takes to get those wires down, but I think uh, the airport and everybody else should be concerned about that first and foremost. Um, I do think this is very minor and in extreme uh, positive for the city of Milbury. And I support uh, the motion if we have one, or was this just a public hearing later? Thank you.
We we've closed the public hearing, just getting council comments and then call a motion. Um, Councilman Fung?
Yeah, thank you for the airport to also appear in our council meeting as well. Thank you so very much for your contribution. I think this amendment is important to the lifeblood of the city of Milbury. Uh, it's important for us to develop the area in the way that we see fit. Uh, and I think I agree with council member Pappan a little early in terms of the risk inherent with the bio safety level two. Uh, as well as given the fact that, you know, we're not really increasing the risk of it nor the height of it by, you know, a measurable amount. Um, so I think uh, you know, this, you know, I'm pretty sure the airport will continue to refine their process and they pay attention to the safety and I appreciate their concern about safety. Uh, in fact, I think if there were to be any accident at all whatsoever, um, you know, the accident itself would probably cause more damage than the bio safety pathogen. So um, so I think uh, this, this is an important amendment for a city and um, that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Vice Vice Mayor, any comments?
I have no comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Sunha, I also serve on the SFO Noise Roundtable. Councilwoman, Vice Mayor Oliva is on our airport land use. I believe uh, we would, we would be happy. I would love to sit down and talk to you about health, health issues in and around the airport. Um, but I will support a motion to for the city of Milbury for the three issues that we need to do on this tonight. So if if someone can make a motion in a second, we can move on.
A motion to approve the uh, this particular item.
So.
So let's make sure what we are doing tonight. We are, number one, approving a resolution overruling the San Mateo City and County Association of Government, C CAG, Airport Land Use Commission's destination, I'm sorry, determination of inconsistency with the ALUP regarding the proposed zoning text amendment to the MSASP uh, with a conditional use permit, uses up to bio safety level two in a TOD overlay zone portion south of Milbury Avenue. Safety compatibility zone two. The second part of the motion is resolution amending the Milbury Station area specific plan to allow with a conditional use permit, certain biotech uses in TOD district zone south of Milbury Avenue. I thought there was a third portion. Are those just the two, city clerk?
That's correct. There's.
Just the two, just the two. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Madam Mayor, you can have the vote on both of those at the same time if you wish.
Uh, that's what I would like. That's the way staff wrote it. Um, I see Councilwoman Pappan. Are you questioned?
I was waiting for the person who made the motion to confirm that.
I'm confirming that I motion for both at the same time.
Thank you.
And I'm seconding that.
Very good. Any further discussion? With that, city clerk, could you call the vote, please?
Council how Oliver is recused. Councilmember Fung?
Aye.
Councilmember Pappan?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Oliva?
Aye.
Mayor Snyder?
Aye.
Okay, public hearing item, the city council adopt two resolution as read by Mayor Snyder. Resolution one is to overruling the San Mateo County um, and County Association of Governments Airport Land Use Commission Determination of Inconsistency with the Airport Land Use Plan Regarding a Proposed Zoning Text Amendment to the M A S P to allow with a conditional use permit use up to uh, uses up to bio safety level two in the transit oriented development overlay zone portion south of Milbury Avenue, safety capability zone two. And resolution to amending the Milbury Station area visit plan to allow with a conditional use permit certain biotechnology uses in the transit oriented development zone district south of Milbury Avenue. With a vote of five to, sorry, uh, with a vote of four to zero dash one with um, councilmember Oliver recused.
Thank you, city clerk. Could you please let Councilman Oliver know that he can join us? And I'm going to look for him to pop back up before we continue. Um, although I guess I can go under existing business, we have no existing business. So as we wait for Councilman Oliver, our next item up is the city's response to the grand jury report ransomware. It is not enough to think you are protected. So if staff could get ready for that presentation. I see Ruben Oliver. I I see the councilman. Councilman, if you're back, welcome back. And staff, are you, you're ready to go ahead. So with that, staff, could you please uh, give your presentation? Thank you.
Yes, again, thank you, uh, Mayor Snyder, members of the city council, Tom Williams. Um, I'll be very brief on this. The grand jury had uh, on October seventh, 2020, the grand jury, San Mateo County had issued a report entitled ransomware. It is not enough to think you are protected. That's attachment one of your staff report. Uh, and the purpose of the report is to have local government agencies assess their cybersecurity strategies and address any deficiencies uh, that they have found to ensure adequate measures are being taken taken to mitigate uh, any risk associated with uh, recovery options and malware and uh, uh, viruses, that type of thing. Uh, in the findings, there are four findings uh, from the grand jury. Uh, again, those are in the report. We agree with all four of those findings. Um, they're here on the PowerPoint presentation. The ransomware is a real and growing threat to public entities in San Mateo County. We agree with that finding. Uh, across the country, local governments and schools represent 12% of all ransomware attacks. Uh, three, the direct and indirect cost of ransomware can be significant. And four, cybersecurity reviews and assessments and an updated, well-executed cybersecurity plan are critical components of IT security strategies. So we agree uh, with those findings. The following four findings, uh, five through eight comprehensive cyber cybersecurity plan should include minimum information concerning prevention steps for spam malware software and backups for recovery. Finding number six, identification of phishing attempts, including the suspension filters is a important component to protecting the IT system for ransomware attacks. Finding seven, testing a full restore of a server to ensure that backups are reliable, should be undertaken regularly as part of the entities backup plan uh, to recover lost information. We, and we actually do that. Item, uh, finding number eight, training of new employees and the recruiting of training of existing employees is an important component of uh, defense against ransomware. I should say recurring training. And I know the council has never been trained, so that's something that we will be doing uh, for our council and our committee and commission members, actually. So we agree with that finding.
So. Some of us have been trained. Thanks.
Attachment number two is actually our response letter on that we agree with those uh, eight findings. And then the response to the grand jury's recommendations that are on the screen, that each governmental entity in San Mateo County with an IT department or IT function, whether it's in-house or contracted, we contract out uh, with a company called Stepford. Uh, we have for a number of years. They take care of all of our IT of services and systems. Uh, that as listed in appendix F, should by November thirtieth of 2020, make a request for a report from their IT organization that address these concerns identified in the report. So just in summary, we have done that. Um, the recommendation has been implemented. Uh, our each IT consultant Stepford uh, has established a strategic prevention and recovery plan and has implemented measures to combat attacks and protect the city's system from damage uh, and cyber attacks and uh, loss of data or use of our systems. So response to a grand jury recommendation number two, which is these confidential internal reports should be provided to the governing body that's you, the city council. By June thirtieth of 2021, this report should describe what actions have already taken place and which will be given timely consideration for future enhancements uh, to security cybersecurity system plan. So we plan on going into closed session with the city council in the next few months um, to uh, provide you uh, with this confidential internal report. And we will definitely do that before uh, the June thirtieth, 2021 deadline. A response number three, uh, given the results of their internal reports, governmental entities may choose to request further guidance by means of a cybersecurity review from the U.S. Department of Homeland Security and/or the cyber hygiene assessment from the county controllers office. Our, we will be implementing our response in the letter is that we will implement this recommendation as warranted and if warranted uh, and appropriate based on the results of the city's confidential internal report. And then uh, number four, uh, response to number four, given the results of their internal reports, governmental entities may choose to ask their IT departments to review their own cybersecurity plan with a detailed template provided by the FCC Cybersecurity Planning Guide and consider customizing its using FCC's uh, create custom security planning guide tool. Uh, and that's footnoted in the staff report under uh, fifty-two. And our response is that we do again intend to implement this recommendation by June thirtieth, 2021. So if there are no other questions, uh, we look for the council to approve the letter for signature by the mayor that we will send our responses to for injury.
Excellent. Any council comments? Seeing no hands raised. City manager, thank you for taking my uh, my comment that we have a lot of committee members um, or myself that do not work for an agency where I may have gotten that training that Councilwoman Pappan has got, so I has received. So I appreciate that. Thank you for listening to that. And uh, may I have a motion?
Move.
Second.
Oh, I think uh, Councilman Oliver, I I heard a motion by Councilwoman Pappan, second by Councilman Oliver. Any additional comments? City clerk, can you call the vote, please?
Councilmember Oliver?
Aye.
Councilmember Fung?
Aye.
Councilmember Pappan?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Oliva?
Aye.
Mayor Snyder?
Aye.
The city approved the city's response to the grand jury report ransomware is ransomware. It is not enough to think you're protected with a vote of five to zero.
Excellent. Thank you. Next on the agenda, moving along here is review and approve the city's response to the grand jury report on second units, adding new housing in the neighborhoods.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just uh, refer to our community development director, Darcy Smith.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Go ahead at your, when you've got everything set up.
Good evening again, Honorable Mayor and council members. So we have a presentation tonight. We need to queue it up. And this presentation will be made by another excellent member of our planning team. And you may remember him, Sam Fielding, our senior planner, who was asked to present this item and write the response um, on this grand jury report titled second units, adding new housing in the neighborhoods. And that's because, as you may recall, Mr. Fielding was instrumental in shepherding the ADU ordinance, accessory dwelling unit ordinance through the um, legislative process last year and is in effect. So he, we thought he was the best person to make the, to write the response on this, which is in your packet and make this brief presentation. So with that, I'll hand it over to Mr. Fielding.
Okay. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council and members of the public. This uh, is uh, I'll be, my name is Sam Fielding. I'm the senior planner. And I'll be presenting the overview of the grand jury report's findings and recommendations and the city response letter to the report. Uh, this grand jury report focused on the uh, looking at uh, how the county of San Mateo and its cities are supporting homeowners who are considering building a new second unit on their property or upgrading a non-permitted one in response to new state laws became effective on January first, twenty twenty. Go to the, okay, go to the next slide here. So on November third, 2020, the city received a letter from the Honorable Judge Danny Y. Child of San Mateo County Superior Court requesting the city response to the findings and recommendations presented in grand jury report filed on October twenty eighth, 2020. A draft letter was prepared by the city to address the grand jury report's findings and recommendations. So the city of uh, uh, Billbury agrees with all the findings of the grand jury report. And it outlines um, you know, the fact that the number of jobs in San Mateo County has grown beyond the number of new housing units available and more housing is needed and second units are one solution for this. From twenty sixteen to twenty twenty, the number of second units constructed annually within the county dramatically increased by 450%. After related state laws were enacted in twenty sixteen. At back of January first, 2020, several additional new state ADU laws were enacted in order to make the destruction of new second units easier for homeowners. Finding number three, there were about 155,000 single family homes in San Mateo County with only 4,000 second units on those properties. So the grand jury report finds that there's a potential opportunity for thousands of new second units. And the county has an unknown but large number of non-permitted second units. This new twenty twenty, the new twenty twenty state laws uh, are intended to make it easier for those units to be made safer and potentially to be brought up to permitting standards. And lastly, the report identified barriers to building new second units and upgrading non-permitted second units. Uh, these included a lack of knowledge by homeowners as to potential lenders that could provide finance for construction of second units. Lack of lenders in the region that have indicated willingness to engage in financing and homeowners difficulty in finding contractors willing to do work on small projects such as second units and the need to recruit and train more inspectors. The Department of Housing and the City and County Association of Governments of San Mateo County co-sponsored and coordinated the Twenty One Elements Project, which aids all jurisdictions in the county to work together on addressing their housing needs, including the development of second units. And San Mateo County Department of Housing is updating its website and marketing plan that focuses on second units. The report also found that the city of San Jose has developed the second year initiative that is worth examining closely and possibly emulating. So the grand jury report uh, offered some recommendations uh, for the cities. Uh, the first one being uh, the county and city should continue their outreach to homeowners, informing them about the new laws that simplify and streamline the construction and permitting of second units. The city uh, agrees with these, all for these recommendations. For the response to this recommendation, number one, um, the city has partially implemented uh, this that this recommendation. And the city's website contains the following resources regarding the permitting and construction of accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling in Milbury. We do have instructions and contact information for ADU applications um, uh, to be submitted to the building department. We have a link to the Milbury ADU ordinance that was recently adopted on on the thirteenth, 2020. We have planning staff's phone number, uh, phone numbers available for questions to answer uh, questions regarding ADU requirements. And we have links to ADUs and housing online tools, handouts and information, including the California Department of Housing Community Development's ADU webpage, the Second Unit Resource Center of San Mateo County, a San Mateo County home shrink with H P Housing webs, and also the Home for All San Mateo County website. So these are some of the research that we have put on our website. Uh, regarding the number two, uh, the city should determine whether there's a way for the public entities to compile list of financial partners. This recommendation is not yet implemented, but uh, will be implemented in the future. Um, the city has worked with the county in the past to address the obstacles. And uh, for example, on November, uh, in November of 2018, the city collaborated with the Housing Endowment Regional Trust of San Mateo County to host the, host the ADU Open House, uh, Milbury Communities Scoping and Information Gathering Session to determine the biggest rules faced by homeowners when continuing adding an ADU to their property. The city welcomes additional opportunities to meet with the county and other cities to find solutions to issues identified in this recommendation. And a recommendation number three um, recommends developing a competent list of contact resources and partners with partnering with training institutions to recruit and train more general contractors. This recommendation uh, would require further analysis by the city, but Milbury is open to exploring the development of a marketing plan to focus on the needs and concerns of homeowners who have non-permitted units. Um, within six months from the publication day of the grand jury report, uh, we'll look at researching the cost of developing. Will look at researching the cost of developing a marketing plan and whether there's an opportunity to collaborate with the county and other cities on development and funding for such a marketing plan. And lastly, the county and cities are encouraged. To encourage homeowners who may have non permitted second units to go through the permitting process. This is a something that the city is currently working on and as part of the applications that we receive in the building department. When new proposed ADUs are proposed. Many, you know, the city, the building department staff and planning staff advises the public on. On the process for. Basically. Renovating and and creating ADUs on their homes as part of their project. So to summarize, the city response to the findings or recommendations, we agree with the findings of the report. And the letter that we will be that is submitted for approval. Offers a responsive findings and recommendations on behalf of the city council, city manager, Mayor of Millbury. This is the attachment in your packet. The letter includes the summary of the outreach and simplify process that's reminding the city has implemented to facilitate ADUs. Including the adoption of the D ordinance on October twenty and informational resources that were added to the city. For tonight's action, staff is recommending that the city council accept the city of Millbrae's draft response to the grand jury report. Second unit adding new housing in the neighborhoods and direct staff to the city's response to the Honorable Judge Danny Whitechild no later than January twenty sixth, twenty twenty one. Staff is available with questions. This concludes the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Fielding. Questions, comments from council? Questions, Councilman Holibur.
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. Just one minor comment. I know we've spoken a lot about eighty years in the past few months. But did mention this on the report that it said the city of Millbury did not respond to the several grand juries survey. So not sure what happened there. I don't don't want to look back at the past, but. When these come forward in the future, it's important that we participate and that we're part of the process. Thank you.
Good.
Other council comments? I have just two really quick. On page six, and I think this came from the grand jury and it was directed to kind of at large, but when they talk about cash hungry cities. Who put in retail space over housing, I really would wish that we would tell them that we are predominantly a residential community. And that we, in fact, have very small percentage of our city zoned commercial. I just I'm tired of being told we have to build more housing when we don't have enough commercial to cover our costs. And then the second question, I think this is along the lines, maybe what Councilman Holibur said on page eighteen. There's a chart of ADUs that have been permitted or recognized throughout the county. And when you look at Millbury, it's zero across the board, although it does have a comment in there saying that there was updated information. And I know we have permitted ADUs. I've been to an ADU on Hemlock. And the homeowner is excited. They've got a new tenant in there. Life is good. So why are we showing zero?
Yeah, I think that probably was the issue with the survey that we didn't get the the survey in time to respond, but staff. Can reach out and provide, you know, the latest information on the the number of ADUs that we have. Permitted in the city because we we have been permitting quite a few and and they come in pretty regularly now through the building department. So I I know that, you know, we we have like at least more than more than twenty at this point that have been the last last year or two that have been installed and been permitted. So.
Excellent. You know, I read the letter, but let's make sure in our letter back to the grand jury, we have all of that documented. And maybe because ADUs are such a hot topic, both from the state as well as from residents in Millbury. City manager, can this either be part of a Friday update or can we update that information on the new community development page? Where all the projects are coming forward? I'm not saying you have to necessarily show a picture of an ADU, but you know, here we've. Because this is good. This is all good stuff for us. It's helping us achieve our lower, in theory, our lower affordability levels. So it would be great to celebrate the work that Mr. Fielding and community development are doing. With that, I don't see any other comments. Any comments from the public? I don't see any comments from the public. May I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Okay, Mr. Fung.
Second.
That was Vice Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you. A city clerk, can we call the call the vote, please?
Councilmember Holibur.
Hi.
Councilmember Fung.
Hi.
Councilmember Pappen.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Oliva.
Hi.
Mayor Snyder.
Hi.
The city council approved the city's responsive grantary report. For second units adding new housing in neighborhoods with a vote of five to zero.
Very good. Thank you. All right. Coming up is actually our, I think, our first, in theory. Public art that will ultimately be funded through the efforts of the city. Please, staff, if you can give your. Please present on item fifteen, adoption and approval of the artist and the theme for the mural at the skateboard park.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to introduce McKenzie Brady, our recreation director for a staff presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. This is McKenzie Brady, Recreation Director, and I'll be presenting on the approval of the artist's theme and keywords for the mural on the Millbrae Skate Park wall. Just a little background. On September eighth, the city council members noted that they would like to see the skate park user group working with the Cultural Arts Advisory Committee. On artwork projects for the skate park. So the Millbrae Cultural Arts Advisory Committee added that to their next agenda for September fourteenth, twenty twenty. And they discussed any potential project ideas and came up with a mural idea. So motion was made, seconded and passed to form a skate park mural ad hoc subcommittee. Which was made up of a member of the Cultural Arts Advisory Committee. Members of the skate park user group and also had two liaisons on the park and recreation. Over the following three months, the skate park mural ad hoc subcommittee met bi weekly. And their process included identifying the wall of the canvas, identifying the fundraising budget, identifying potential artists via a survey for the subcommittee members as well as conversation. Identifying the theme and keywords for the art and then presenting the artists and theme recommendations to the Millbury Cultural Arts Advisory Committee. And then tonight, presenting the artists and theme recommendations to the Millbrae City Council. And as you can see here, this is the northern and western wall of the skate park. So this is this vantage point is from Millbury Avenue. So you can see the concrete wall there. It's about forty ish feet long. And then there's another section on the western side there that is within the skate park itself. And so this canvas specifically was chosen, as you may remember. We have been the State Office of Grants and Local Services has recommended to the National Park Service to. Give the funding for the land and water conservation fund to the city for renovating the the skate park. And so we did not want to inhibit any potential renovations. And so this outer wall would not be. Anything that would be affected by renovation. So this was the canvas that was chosen. And it's also. Noted within the skate park user group that murals should not be done on skating surfaces either. So this is something that would not be affected by any of the skaters or by renovation. So with the fundraising budget, it was determined that five thousand dollars for art and labor would be appropriate. And then ten percent is what is typically. Asked of artists to put together a design. The five hundred dollars for the sketch of design for prior approval and five thousand dollars for art and labor for. Total of fifty five hundred dollars for this project. So staff in the skate park user group members will work together to raise these funds if approved. With the art selection process, artists were submitted by members of the ad hoc subcommittee. So there were a total of thirteen different artists. And all of the artists were judged and voted on via the survey and one artist came out ahead, Brian Barnacle. And so this is Brian Barnacle. His work is a mix of modernism cubism. It has many murals within the Bay Area and the next slide will show you that. He was named as one of San Francisco's top muralists by seven by seven magazine in two thousand eight. And if any of you have been to the city of Santa Cruz, you may have seen this mural. It's called Surfing Bird mural. And these are all of his, this his work that has been done since two thousand six, his different work conditions with murals and signs. Some notable ones within here, San Francisco Seventh and Townsend mural. It's a six hundred foot mural that is able to be seen by Caltrain riders. In San Mateo and in this will be shown up showing you shortly is a Caltrain mural called the Good Life in downtown San Mateo. Santa Cruz. Boardwalk, ice blocks in Sacramento. And the Chase Center, there's Google, Facebook artists and residents mural, many, many numerous murals that he has done. And so after the artist was was chosen for recommendation by the ad hoc subcommittee, the subcommittee also came up with a theme and keywords. And so the recommended theme and keywords are theme being fun in the sun with keywords of vibrant happiness, health. Movement flow and inclusion. And the reason for having this theme and keywords is to be able to let the artist. Work freely with as an artist would, you know, so being able to give them the boundaries of a theme and keyword and then letting them do what they do best. And so this is the proposed timeline. So well, and previous timeline on December eleventh was when the artists and theme keyword recommendations were presented to and approved by the Millbrae Cultural Arts Advisory Committee. And then today is the artist and theme recommendation to you all for action. If approved, on February twelfth, the sketch of art would be brought back to the Cultural Arts Advisory Committee, well, by February twelfth. And then that next meeting would be on February twelfth. So bringing it back to the Cultural Arts Advisory Committee for review and recommendation. On February twenty third, bringing that sketch to city council for review and approval. And then if approved at that point, we will move to fundraising by the end of the fiscal year, raising the fifty five hundred dollars. And then by no later than September first, having the mural completed. As I mentioned before, this is the Good Life downtown San Mateo Caltrain mural that Brian Barnacle did. So next steps are for staff recommending that the council consider approving the recommended artist of Brian Barnacle. The theme of fun in the sun and the six keywords for the mural on the northern and western wall of the Millbrae Skate Park. And that is all. Do you all have any questions?
Thank you, Director McKenzie. Council, I have a question for all of you. We are still learning how to do public art. And in this case, I think the ad hoc committee that had members of both Park and Rec and Culture Arts and the the public did a pretty good job. They looked at all the artists in the future for the next time. Would city council prefer seeing more than one artist? Or are you comfortable with however it happens within our committee level of them choosing the artist? So I consider this learning as we go. On there. Thank you. And with that, Councilwoman Pappen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I I think the artist is great. Congratulations to the group. I wonder if this is consistent with the established art, public art policy the city already has. But no, kudos to the committee who picked the artist.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Oliva.
Yes, I'm really pleased that the committee came through with this and I think that this is what the committee work should be do, and I'm very comfortable taking their their recommendation.
Excellent. Councilman Holibur.
Yes, I agree with those statements. I think the art artist that was chosen is a great choice. Really like the portfolio of work that is done at other sites and I don't feel like the council needs to be making those decisions. I think. You know, the relevant committee or commissions should be involved in selecting the artists and final approval come to council.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman Fung.
Yeah, thank you for the committee members who worked together, worked so hard to getting this up to this point. Appreciate your effort there. Just one quick question. How do we intend to raise money for this? If you can give me some, you know, some detail on that, I would appreciate it. Otherwise, it's all good.
Yes, Councilman Funk. We we plan to do just reaching out to local community groups and we have not established a direct way to raise these funds quite yet, but. The the skate park user group that I'm working with, they have done a number of murals, public art that are even. Within skate parks. And so they do have a good plan on how to go about raising these funds.
Director McKenzie, just two things that came up at the Cultural Arts Advisory Committee. The artist does have a tendency towards a brown palette. That location is already pretty shaded, but the ad hoc committee said that he also has done works that are possibly a little bit brighter. If you look at that space, it can be a little bit dark and then there's all that brown tan bark below it. So we'll see what they come up with. Director McKenzie, I didn't notice it before, but concrete bleeds or sweats and it's got those water stains on the wall. So hopefully, when this goes back to the art, however, it will, it's going to go back to MCAC. That maybe we do some kind of treatment on top so that whatever. Happens up there won't stain the mural when it's done. And it could be that the muralist knows how to do all that. But I just looking at those stains, I'd hate to have a new piece of art stained.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, ma'am, please go ahead.
My question was not answered.
Oh, I'm sorry. That was Councilwoman Pappen. What was your question?
Whether this process is in alignment with the existing public art. Principles or policies established by the city of Millbury.
I didn't ask MCAC to run through this, but basically the policy says that the fine that artwork should go past and be voted on by the full city council. So in that case, yes. What we have not done as a city is something that city of Belmont recently has done, which is to come up for a plan of public art throughout the city. Which I think would be a great thing to come back. But as far as my reading of the existing ordinance, yes, they are following the ordinance.
Mayor, if I may jump in, we we did to answer the council members' question, we did review the. City of Millbury public art policy. It does comply with the public art policy.
Thank you.
But can we just make a motion, please, to approve? Please go ahead. Make a motion. Motion to approve. Is there a second?
All right, second.
I think Ruben got there first. So motion, Vice Mayor Oliva, second, Councilman Holibur. City clerk, could you please call the question? Or call the vote?
Councilmember Holibur.
Hi.
Councilmember Fung.
Hi.
Councilmember Pappen.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Oliva.
Hi.
Mayor, Mayor Snyder, excuse me.
Hi.
And Director McKenzie and and to Jeffrey, thank you so much. It was it was a bit of a process, some learning curves, but well done. And thank you to both committees and the ad hoc committee.
The city council approved the artist and theme for the mural on the skate park wall with the vote of five to zero. Thank you.
Okay, next up, council discussion and appointment to council subcommittees for twenty twenty one. I'm going to start off by saying that the city manager and the city clerk and I worked on it. And then today. Also, I've made a few changes, assuming that a couple of council members would want a little bit more responsibility and taking away some of my assignments. So from the staff report that staff will go over to the spreadsheet, there are two changes. But if you do not want them, I will take them back. I just was trying to balance the workload. The other issue that has happened is Councilman Fung being brand new has not yet had a chance to acquire regional assignments. So he, I I gave him many more local assignments to kind of make up for the fact that he's not on any regional ones yet.
Does that? That that could come with appointment, right?
From the mayor? It could come with appointment and I I'm aware of two of our council members who have. Letters of interest at C CAG on Thursday, so we'll see what happens.
Okay, thank you.
That report? Comments?
Well, they we, Mayor, we don't really have a. Mayor, we don't really have a staff report as these are your, your selections and then. The council subcommittee appointed by the council members, you know, as recommended by you, but ratified by the council. So I think it may be best just to share the spreadsheet. That you had submitted.
Okay.
The city clerk.
Basically, the changes are mainly affecting Councilman Holibur and Councilman Fung. Councilman Holibur, I, I took you off Park and Rec and gave that to. Councilman Fung so that he has a major commission on that. And then there's, but there's the BPAC that meets just before it. And I have another meeting that night. I, I run between two meetings. But if you are interested in doing that, you still have your hands in on Park and Rec. And you and Councilwoman Pappen are still the Recreation Center Rebuild Committee. And then Mr. Fung, I, I think I changed it and then I changed it back. We were trying to look at the fire subcommittee. Within a couple of years, we have to go back out to the voters for that. But in the meantime, the one accomplishment I had hoped the fire subcommittee would do in two thousand twenty was to work on. A much, getting our residents and our canyons to get cleaned out to prevent fire danger. And I thought that you would be good with that. You had also expressed an interest in emergency services, as did Councilman Holibur. So I tried to spread things out a little bit.
So Mayor, if I may, maybe we start at the top and just identifies, you know, some of these are, are regional county city appointments. And are appointed by external committees. But I think we start from bottom to top with the allocation. One, it, it shows what the workload is of council members. I think it's good for the city residents to know the workload of, of council members. Because sometimes I think that they don't realize how much work it is to be on the council. And all the regional committees and, and representation of the city. So I would, I would start from the top. And then maybe have a discussion as we work down towards. The regional appointments, external agencies, regional appointments by city council. Then regional appointments by the mayor. Millbrae commissions committees that are appointed by the mayor. And then the city council subcommittees that are ratified by the, by the full city council. So if that makes sense, we can.
Okay.
Just go through it real quick and.
One question, city manager. Is there a reason why Sheriff's Activity League's not on this regional county?
My apologies, I missed that one.
I don't believe that's a city appointment.
Yeah, I know.
It's a regional appointed for external on the top.
Vice Mayor, can you tell me who appoints that one?
The sow board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Mayor, if I may?
So city manager, did you want me to kind of act like a staff report then and say? The one change, and I appreciate city clerk kind of dividing up the talks, top section of the spreadsheet that we've normally used. To show what is done external to Millbrae that we have to compete with other people for, with people outside the city. And then breaking it down like that. So the city and council of associated governments has a legislative committee. That Councilwoman Pappen has been serving on for many years. I have been serving on the bike pedestrian committee at that level for five years. Vice Mayor Oliva, I think you've been on the Hart board for, for several years. I don't know when you first joined. But many years representing the city. And then Councilwoman Pappen was appointed to the MTC board two years ago. Two years? And a highly, highly competitive seat, that MTC seat. So congratulations that we have a seat at that table. Under the regional city county, the city council voted to keep former mayor Dan Quigg in the Basque. Which is Water District. And he is also then on the Financing Authority. So that's outside of the city council. And then the council of cities typically is the mayor and then a proxy is given to whomever is going to go to those dinners. Now that we're meeting by Zoom, I, I think, well, we didn't have meetings for six or seven months with council of cities. But that one is usually done by the mayor and or proxy to whom is in attendance that night. Did you have comments, Commissioner, Councilmember Fung on the top section?
Nothing, ma'am.
Okay.
I do miss Madam Mayor.
Go ahead, Ms. Pappen.
Yeah, as part of the MTC position, I also have to serve on the. What is it? The environmental quality, what is it? It's not, yeah, I think it's the congestion management.
Right.
I serve on that as part of MTC, not as.
Okay.
So and that's the last Monday of every month. And then also, we have the staff liaison as public works for MTC. That is kind of public, I've never, I've asked that our public works advise the city council. And the projects they submitted to CCG and MTC. So I'm hoping that happens. But it's also, I get a briefing by CCG staff whenever I have an MTC meeting. So Millbrae staff needs to brief the city council for sure. But that's, the staff liaison is technically CCG.
Okay. And so you're, so how? I guess that means for the environment, the congestion management one, add an additional line under regional city county. And just put under your, it's a CCG seat that you're holding.
No, it's an MTC seat that I'm holding.
Okay, I'm sorry.
There, there is one available for CCG. So council member, former mayor Lee and I were serving at the same time. So that, there is, that position is open.
Well, there are two, there are two of our council members applying to be on that. So we'll see what happens on Thursday.
Okay. Best of luck to everybody.
Okay. Councilman Fung?
Nothing on the top section.
Okay. All right. Under regional city, county and city. I've been roundtable, Annie, Councilwoman Oliva has been ALEC, Association of Bay Area Governments, Assemblyman Fung, Assemblyman Fung. Okay, I'm getting tired. Councilman Fung, you wanted a bag, so I've given you a bag. For one year, I'll be serving on CCG Board of Directors. The Caltrain Local Policy Group, Ruben had been that, he offered it up so that Gina could spear that. I thought that worked in really well with your MTC hat. Hart, Annie has been our representative, the Peninsula.
So one second, I'm sorry, Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt. On Hart Member Agency Committee, is there a way that we can have two members on that committee?
I'm not from, I, I don't know. Would you like two members?
If, if in fact. I've been appointed by external agencies and we can have another one of us at the table. I mean, I'd be all for that.
Madam Mayor? I believe that is possible when it comes to Hart. It's a matter of fundraising. So anybody who can raise funds for Hart is always welcome, I think, if they can get elected.
A little bit of that, but I'm, I'm thinking that, I mean, I certainly don't want to give up my position there and I've, I've, I've done a lot of work there. But I would love that Councilmember Fung can be part of it as well. City manager, is there a way we could figure that out?
Certainly, we can contact Hart and get an answer to that question.
I, I sent it, I called Armando, but I, I don't know where he is, he was. Because when I saw this, I was like, well, if we can have two positions, that would be amazing for the two of us.
I think that would be great. In which case. If we voted on this tonight, would it have to come back for a second vote or can we vote tonight to?
Through the chair. The agenda item is only on the council subcommittees.
Okay, well, then it would, then it's, it's just up to me to do it if it happens. Okay.
If we could possibly make the delegate Anders on that, on that line item. And I, I, I don't want to give it up. I got to be honest, Anders. There too. So if, if in fact we could somehow let him on, on, on the table as well. I'd love to have him mentor and, and I'll help.
Excellent.
We will reach out to the Hart board tomorrow and get that information and then.
Thank you.
Councilmember Fung now and yourself, Vice Mayor.
And I, I believe under congestion relief, Councilman Holibur is the chair of that committee? Did I get that correct?
No, I'm, I'm not the chair. I'm, I'm currently on a subcommittee for the strategic plan.
Subcom on strategic plan. Okay, and under Peninsula Clean Energy, I've been the alternate for five years and I'm in line for being on the executive committee. So otherwise, Councilman Holibur, I know you were interested. And Wayne and I kind of teamed this one. It's got a big fat agenda. And then they have secondary groups for it, strategic planning meetings and things like that. I am really happy to try to figure out how to get both of our voices there. And I know at least in October of two thousand twenty one, that's when CCG BPAC will be voting on grants. And if you're not there, you don't get to vote the money. So you're, this is going to be an active position, the alternate for PCE. The Library JPA, is that where you're the chair?
Yes.
Okay. Congratulations. Emergency Services is Ann Schneider and Ruben Holibur. And pre-hospital, Councilwoman Pappen gave that one up, Councilman Fung, so that I could give you a regional JPA to serve on.
Thank you.
There is an opportunity, but to sit down with the city manager on that, the one meeting that I attended is an alternate for that. There's a fun financial structure in the way ambulances go out. It may be another five years before that contract comes up for renewal. Right now, the extra money derived from every ambulance run goes to the county. With the exception of two cities that run their own program, South San Francisco, and I can't remember the other. It was an issue that we had a retired firefighter here in Millbrae. He brought it up at several council meetings. Sadly, he has passed on, but it is an opportunity to potentially bring a new revenue stream to Millbrae. Not big, but every ten thousand dollars or a hundred thousand can help. So something to work on with that JPA. Okay, Mayor's coordinating council is basically Mayor Vice Mayor. Ms. Oliva, hopefully you're happy with the Chamber of Commerce. I'm staying with my two, Councilwoman Pappen with, or I'm staying with Community Enhancement. Councilwoman Pappen with MCTV. Economic Vitality, Councilwoman Pappen had requested that as her number one. Park and Recs, Mr. Fung, to get you in there. You may have some fun with Mills Estates Park that way too.
Actually, Madam Mayor, I think, you know, as far as the, the Park and Rec, since Councilmember Holibur has been working on the BPAC. As well as the rec center, would it make more sense for him to continue? I mean, he's been liaison for that for a long time, isn't it?
I am happy with whatever the two of you want there. I had too many things, that's why I, and really what I do with the Millbrae BPAC is just report on potential money coming from CCG BPAC.
Yeah, I don't think it'd be better if, you know, Councilmember Holibur would be able to, you know, see through this whole thing.
Councilman Holibur, what would you, what do you think?
I mean, I'd be happy to take it. I, I think in terms of the BPAC. I don't know if we really had an official council liaison role to the BPAC. But, you know, based on your role on the county BPAC, I think it would probably be best for you to continue to update on, on the county grants.
Okay, I, I just didn't want to look greedy having too many assignments. So I was happy to give up some of mine if people wanted them. Okay, in which case.
I would be happy to give that to, I would be happy to give the commission liaison to Councilman Fung. But I'd be happy to continue on serving on that.
Mr. Fung, if you're okay with that, I'll put Mr. Holibur back on Park and Rec. And event, I, I think active transportation is going to be coming to this committee. So there could be some nice creative work going on there. Yes, Councilwoman.
It appears economic vitality is the same night as the Caltrain Local Policy. Makers Group. And I understand the economic vitality is always changing their date around.
Yes. It's, it's our understanding that the city manager and you will find a date that works for you, Councilwoman Pappen.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
And make it a, a new standing date on that. And, and whatever, yeah, whatever you can come up, it's to work. I'm sorry, evac, but it's to work on your schedule.
If not, if not, I'll take it, Gina, because I had that same trouble with the scheduling. They changed it around on me.
Okay, Councilmember Oliva and I will work out a date that works for us. Thank you.
Excellent, excellent. Senior Advisory Committee. Keeping Councilwoman, or Vice Mayor Oliva, Sister City Commission, Mr. Holibur, and Youth Advisory to Mr. Fung.
Madam Mayor?
I'm sorry, yes.
Like, would you like an alternate for Parks and Recreation?
I would make it Mr. Fung.
Okay.
Just flip them back and forth. To be honest, we kind of looked at those and Councilman Holibur had put it farther down on his list. And I couldn't give everything Mr. Fung wanted. So I was just trying to give him something that would be one of the key movers and shakers in the city, which is Park and Rec. But, great. Okay, Bike Sharing Committee, I am hopeful to give this to Millbrae's BPAC. Are there any problems there? Okay, Budget and Finance, Vice Mayor Oliva, I emailed you and you got back, but I couldn't quite tell what it meant. One of the reasons why I put Councilman Holibur on here is his experience in budgeting up in San Francisco and his experience last year. I think, I think we've been lucky that we haven't had to do any cuts with the COVID recession. But I think this year is really going to be tough and I would really like Councilman Holibur's experience on that.
You don't know my experience.
That is true.
I, yeah, I was disappointed on that one.
I mean, I can change it back. I just, I think for all of us, it's going to be a year where we're going to have to start looking. I don't want to use the word cut, but other cities are already making cuts.
Yeah, I mean, I, I just need to go on the record here on this. This is, the budget is outside of this item, so I would not. Discuss budget or budget position. You just received the cap for tonight. And our, our so far position is strong with the cuts at management that's occurred given the COVID crisis. So just want to go on the record.
Yes, Mr. Holibur.
I would be happy to give that position to Vice Mayor Oliva.
Okay, that's fine. It is typically that. Okay, Ms. Oliva, you are back.
Thank you, Councilwoman Holibur. I appreciate that.
Okay, originally I had had myself and Councilwoman Pappen on interview, but I was a little heavy. So, Mr. Holibur, I moved you to interview. Is that okay?
Sure.
It's different than the staff report. The only reason I'm recommending changing the recreation center is the sign up at the recreation center calls it the Recreation Center. Not the Community Center. I just think we need to be consistent. SFO, Annie, Councilwoman Vice Mayor Oliva, Mr. Fung. Fire Shared Committee, I went back and forth with this one. Okay, Fire Share, Fire Share. Myself and, and Mr. Fung.
So I gave that one up too. But I'm happy to. Anders, that's a good committee, good committee for you.
Sure, we're happy to serve.
Infrastructure is the same, Schneider and Holibur. The Joint Schools, what I heard from at least two school board members is they would like to meet with all of us. And almost all of you put wanting to be on the joint schools. And it was tough to do some of the. MCAC work without getting to talk to the school district especially, not just with COVID, but the changes in principals, the change in superintendent. So I'm hoping everyone is okay with making that a joint meeting. I know we didn't, a couple of us didn't like the early, early morning. But can we do a doodle poll and find out what works for us and the school board?
And you forgot homeless subcommittee, Mayor.
Oh, I skipped over it. Um, yes, so Councilwoman Oliva and Councilman Fung. West Side, keeping Councilwoman Pappen and Councilwoman Oliva, that was your top choice. Tech Committee, I moved you from tech to give Mr. Fung an opportunity to have more committees. But I, again, I'm open if you all want to change those. And the new one, Public Resources and Communication. It's basically another fundraising one to come up with money. And the new one, Public Resources and Communication, it's basically another fundraising one to come up with money so that the city can get new software to have a truly proactive website. Something that our webs, current website does not have the capabilities to do, which is why Community Enhancement for the Halloween, winter holiday, drought tolerant, et cetera, et cetera, has all gone on a separate website that has the ability to take in recommendations and things. It can be much more interactive than our current website. But I would prefer everything being in-house, but it just can't do it.
Councilmember Fung, you have, you have a heavy load here on this.
I have a, yeah, about five committees there.
If you'd like to give out the Technology Committee, I've worked it with Councilmember Holibur before and I'm happy to, to relieve you of that if you want.
Yeah, actually, you know, I was thinking the Technology Subcommittee might be okay because I used to be in technology, but
There you go.
But if someone could help out on the Public Resources, that would be great.
I don't know if that's my thing. I'm not, I mean, I'm willing to help on anything, but I'm not really.
I'm a little confused too, the Public Resource, Madam Mayor, you mentioned that it was
We talked about it.
Fundraising thing for the new website going up.
Well, fundraising for website, but also how are we getting our information to people who speak other languages or other languages as their, their first language? How do we make sure that we're reaching out to those groups on there? Do we need to do more in the city to make sure that we're reaching out? And I thought that would be a good fit for you.
Yeah. Okay. I, I can try to help out on that if that's the case. Perhaps I need to find ways to, let me see here.
Well, the other option is I, the other person that I had originally been playing around with fire, if, if Councilman Holibur, because he's going to be the alternate to emergency services, is to move Mr. Holibur over to fire. And when I talked to the city manager about this committee, it was the one action we didn't get done last year, which was the clearing of our canyons of debris to get us more fire ready. It's called a get ready program and we have not implemented it here in the city. So it's more than just looking at the contract with CCFAD.
Yeah, so if, if Councilmember Holibur doesn't mind, if you don't mind working on that, I would appreciate that.
For the Fire Subcommittee?
Yeah, the Fire Share Subcommittee.
Yeah, I can take that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Holibur. So that actually goes back to the way I had it, but I was just trying to make sure, Mr. Fung, given that you don't have regional assignments yet, that you had enough to do, but I'm happy. Councilwoman Papin, yes.
Thank you. Um, I think particularly with a new council member on board and you mentioned fundraising. The FPPC prohibits behests by elected members, so we need to be very careful. We don't want to get our new council member in any awkward positions or violations of the FPPC. So we need to watch that. And then I had one other recommendation, Madam Mayor. If, once you finalize this list, that staff is informed about who the new representatives are. Because I know when I got the Youth Advisory, staff didn't know who to send the emails to and stuff like that. So it'd be very helpful to whoever the representative is that our staff knows that as well. They can send the emails to that person.
Excellent point. Thank you. And in terms of the FPPC, I believe we talked about it with MCAC when we were looking for donate, when we, when MCAC was looking for donations of paints and materials. So that's a good point. Elaine, City Manager, you and I, the three of us can work that out and figure out a process. To be honest, I was kind of hoping that the city, various high-tech firms put out grants for technology. And the city would be applying for a grant if we did the research to find out which tech firms have those grants.
That would be, I assume, acceptable.
So, but I thank you for bringing that up because that is a good, a good issue not to get caught into. Okay, do I need to go over the changes or are we comfortable?
If you could just send us a copy when you're done, that'd be great.
Excellent. Any comments? And again, this may change Thursday night. Hopefully we will have two council members appointed to new committees. And then there's Council of Cities, the end of the month, so there, there'll be more opportunities there. Okay, can I have a motion to accept with the changes?
Still motioned.
Aliva, motion second? Was that Mr. Holibur?
Second, yes.
Thank you. All right, City Clerk, could you please call the vote, please?
Holibur?
Aye.
Councilmember Fung?
Aye.
Councilmember Papin?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Aliva?
Aye.
Mayor Snyder?
Aye.
The city council approved the agreements of the 2021 Subcommittee with amendments by the vote of five to zero.
And City Clerk, you and I, you know, maybe anytime after 10 o'clock tomorrow morning, we can make sure that we both captured the same things. I marked up my chart on that. Thank you, and thank you to City Council for that. Um, last but not least, item 17, accept comprehensive annual financial report, the CAFR for the 2019 and 2020 fiscal year. And if staff could please give the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. I would like to introduce Mr. Mike Sun, the city's finance director for the presentation.
Thank you, City Manager Williams. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. We will briefly go over the comprehensive annual financial report for 1920 and I will highlight some of the things that have happened. So first of all, I'd like to get into the next screen here and talk about what really is a CAFR. And a CAFR is basically a look back at what the government did in the previous fiscal year. So governments do need to comply with accounting requirements. These are set by the Governmental Accounting Standards Board by GASB. CAFR really introduces and guides our readers to the financials that happened in the previous fiscal year. So the previous fiscal year was fiscal year 1920. While in comparison, if you think about a budget, it's actually looking forward, so it's planning for the next fiscal year. So I just wanted to kind of make that distinction. What it also does is it reports kind of a grade of how the which are the government-wide and the front financial treatment. The note and the statistical data, things that you can kind of see how a city is actually doing. Also, there's financial trends that you can kind of see at the end as to how we're doing in certain revenues and other types. Next slide. So an independent auditor actually views and reports these out as well so that they can review what it looks like. All right, have you seen the screen? I'm sorry, it's looking like it's not moving. Sorry, let's try this from here. Okay, so for revenues on the General Fund, what we have noticed is that there were some quite significant impacts mainly towards sales tax and transient occupancy tax. You can see a sales tax was significantly affected and transient occupancy tax in the last few months of the fiscal year was very severely affected. In fact, if we're looking at the 1920 final to the actuals, you would actually see that that was quite a difference. You're only looking at getting about three quarters of what we thought we would get in the final budget here. So those were the big things that actually happened in revenues. Move forward over to expenditures. And you can see in the expenditures for the General Fund, every single department worked together to basically take lots of cost cutting measures and to go ahead and try to save the city quite a bit. We formulated a plan to save the city quite a bit of money. You can see from general government to public safety, which included saving money on the UAL. The unfunded, but we actually got a credit from the San Francisco County Sheriff's Office. Public Works was very significant and lots of capital projects were delayed or we had some pretty good savings. We were able to use some other funds from parks to community development and capital outlets as well. And then even in the transfers outs, there were some savings in some of the other funds that the General Fund does tend to subsidize a bit and then that was reduced quite a bit. So in, in summary, we always strive for the gold standard, which is an unmodified opinion with no findings, and that's what we had this year. Net position for all funds actually increased by 24.7 million. A lot of that's in capital assets and developer contribution fees. Um, some revenues, as I had mentioned, were acutely affected, sales tax and transient occupancy tax, which you're continuing to monitor right now. And the city took quick action and we were able to alleviate this by basically reducing expenditures via combination of cost savings measures. We enacted a hiring freeze as well as a spending reduction. We used restricted funds such as Measure A and Measure W for qualifying projects. That's a very good use, basically want to use restricted funds over more flexible funds like the General Fund if you can, especially if they're for qualifying projects. We also had some delay of capital projects so that we are able to meet this. Are there any questions?
I don't see any questions. Please keep going, Mr. Sun.
Um, this actually ends our presentation. I just wanted to kind of give a summary by saying that the city had done a lot of work to make sure that we were on sound financial footing at the end of the year.
Okay, no questions? Public comment? Any questions from the public? Please raise your hand. I am not seeing any hands raised from the public. This is an action item then. So City Manager, just in general then, because I haven't been sleeping at night thinking that, that these numbers were going to be so bad, we're looking, tell tell it so the public will understand what we think this means for the like next three months or so.
Well, well, so our, our audited financial report came back, as Mike said, you know, at the gold standard. But I, I think more than anything, given you know, the coronavirus and the impact on our local economy, we're, we're doing okay. But a lot of that goes to the budget strategies that the city council adopted. You know, if you recall, we, we brought back in March and April, you know, the, the 1920 fiscal budget. And that's when the city council agreed to implement a hiring freeze, do some spending reductions and really tighten our belt, which was really our saving grace, that we took swift action immediately in response to the pandemic issues. And Mike, if you could go to slide number three real quick. I mean, even though this, this report looks good and it's good news, I think, Mayor, as you had, had mentioned previously, we need to be cautious. Our TOT, Transit Occupancy Tax Revenue is down, a- as you can see on this, closing out the fiscal year by about 24%. But we're seeing, you know, that continue and significant declines where, you know, we, we may lose, that, that could be reversed where we could lose, you know, 75% of our TOT. But we continue to monitor it and hopefully we'll get out of this pandemic soon. And as you know, the hotel demand in the city of Millbrae goes as the airport goes and goes as convention business in the surrounding region goes. So other than that, I think we look, we look pretty good, but we'll move forward with, with caution here as we round out the midpoint of the fiscal year. We'll also be bringing back a mid-year budget review to the city council in the next month.
So I'm speaking for Community Enhancement, which has, and City Manager, we've talked about it and Parks and Rec have talked about it. The tree ordinance now trying to tighten up on the median strips that have been concreted in, in forms of green infrastructure. Will we be able to have an Arbor Day where we can plant some trees? Will we be able to afford that?
Well, a couple of things. One, I'd like to get back to you on that, give you an update depending on where we are with the COVID-19 restrictions for group gatherings and that type of thing.
Oh, well, definitely for that. It's, it's more, and as, as staff has told me, it's not necessarily the cost of trees. It's the long-term maintenance of the trees. And, you know, had been hoping for the tree ordinance to come back and then build whatever we're going to do for Millbrae's trees, which is a climate change action around the tree ordinance. So it's one thing to have an ordinance, it's not really going to do anything unless there's some funding behind it.
Well, the tree ordinance also is, is not, not really for the city. It's, it's for private property, private development, tree permits, heritage trees, that type of thing. But we will be bringing back that ordinance to the council very soon.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Papin, do you have a question?
Along those lines, CCG had a sustainable streets program. We hopefully will get some funding for El Camino Real if we can work with Caltrain.
Yeah, and I think public works has been, public works.
Trans, excuse me, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Sorry to jump in. I was just going to say, yeah, I mean, that's, that's a good point, Councilmember Papin. And our Public Works Department has, has done a good job in going after that grant funding. The extension of Spur Trail, we've had some, actually be on the agenda at the next council meeting. Some traffic improvements that we've implemented based on the policy for our complete streets and traffic calming.
Well, and, and, well, I think both Gina and I were at the CCG meeting where they're talking about a potential future funding source, which is in, in a way in Lufi's for green infrastructure. So a, a large development project goes in, they don't have enough land to green infrastructure themselves. The money would go into a pot and cities could get grants from that pot to do localized green infrastructure, meaning flood control and sea level or stormwater issues. So to me, that's an exciting thing that was approved in the December CCG, but now they've got to make it happen.
Yeah, and then we have, we have a great project that was completed several months ago on Taylor out at the intersection. I think it's Taylor and Ashton Key or Taylor and Laurel over by Taylor Middle School.
Yes, Taylor and Ashton and Alamaney or Allegheny. And we've never been able to have a kickoff for that because we've been sheltering in place since it finished. So, well, thank you. No other questions? With that, can I have a motion to approve or accept? Motion to accept. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Fung. Elaine, if you could call the vote, please.
Councilmember Holibur?
Aye.
Councilmember Fung?
Aye.
Councilmember Papin?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Aliva?
Aye.
Mayor Snyder?
Aye.
And thank you, Mr. Fung.
I'm sorry?
I, I said, thank you, Mr. Sung.
Oh, yes.
Finance Director Sung.
You're welcome, ma'am.
Okay.
Oh, if I may read the vote.
Oh, I'm sorry, Elaine. Go ahead, please.
The city council accepted the comprehensive annual financial report, CAFR, for the 2019 to 2020 fiscal year by the vote of five to zero.
Okay, Committee Reports, I know it's been the holidays, but if, if people, please share. I like, this is my favorite part of council, to be honest, hearing what's happening in other committees or other activities even during COVID. And we'll sort of start in, from the bottom up, Councilman Holibur.
I have no reports at this time.
Thank you. Councilman Fung?
I am still trying to get my first assignment, so I guess I don't have.
But you have attended council of cities and you're getting your feet wet and you've put in applications.
Yes, I'm, I'm cautiously optimistic about that and, and look forward to, you know, being able to represent not only Millbrae, but as well as the entire San Mateo County. So look forward to those opportunities. Thank you.
And I could look at your list. I think before you know it, you're going to be having these liaison duties that will be taking your time. Okay, Councilmember Pappin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Metropolitan Transportation Committee, I've got a lot of homework before tomorrow, but. They are moving forward, particularly with the transit recovery recommendations. As we all know, nobody's taking public transportation these days. Those who are, that is their only mode of transportation. So it's very important that we make transportation more accessible, more convenient and more equitable. And those are the moves that MTC is making along those lines. In addition, they, I've been assigned to an ad hoc committee to look at a regional transit manager position. Because there are twenty seven different transit agencies. And as we in Millbrae know, none of them work together, which is absolutely tragic. But now that nobody has any money, they're trying to work together. And we want to make sure that those are lasting improvements and changes along those lines. At this time, Madam Mayor, since the developer, Urban Republic, was on the line, I would ask that we formally have an update. On the Millbrae Station Development, because as I understand it. He quoted Promises Made. We still haven't seen the access to the station, which I think has been detrimentally and permanently damaged. Additional parking was removed by BART to compensate the access. We haven't seen anything about the landscape, the art scape, the landmark. The Millbrae sign's gone now, so where, what are we getting out of that? So I think an update would be very helpful to the public. Because if you, as the mayor has been over there, you can clearly see the buses can no longer drop off the big ones. Right near the entrance to the station. So I think some major problems have gone wrong there. And I think we do need to know about any BART extension of tracks. Because we, I mean, that was mentioned tonight in another item, and I have no clue what that means. So if they are making adjustments to the station area, I think Millbrae and our city needs to know that. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
I'm new at the city manager. I think that Councilwoman Pappin's suggestion is an excellent one. Can, how, when could we expect to see that on a council agenda?
He's muted.
Did we lose city manager? I don't see his picture either.
I, I will look for the first meeting in February to bring that report back to the city council.
And Madam Mayor, can we also get an update from city staff as to the projects they submitted to CCG and MTC?
I have that noted as well. I will talk with Keelim and perhaps either in two weeks, we will bring that back. I think that's ready to go. Or again, the first meeting in, in February, but.
Can you help me with that? Normally when we apply for a grant, we have to come back and approve it at a council meeting.
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, let me clarify. The CCG Board, our staff submits projects to the CCG Board, which then get submitted to MTC as regionally significant projects. And somehow, city council is never informed about these things. They're always kind of a surprise. It just so happens, we had two amazing projects, which were proposed to CCG, approved, sent on to MTC and recognized as regionally significant. So I believe the city council really needs to know about these. It'd be wonderful.
I think that's an excellent point. Thank you, Councilwoman. Can we make it so, city manager? It's just a new process to develop. I think that's great. Then we can, we can all be pitching in to help it go forward. Vice Mayor Leva, anything else, Councilwoman Pappin?
No, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. You know, there was one comment in the paper by one of the Caltrain Board members from San Francisco, working with BART. And the article mentioned Millbrae. That makes me very nervous. So just want to make sure that you saw that. I don't know if it makes you nervous too.
I did see it. It's pretty much that they're all trying to be. Doing what they should have been doing for decades, coordinating schedules and fairs and stuff like that. So they're all trying to be good neighbors at this point in time. But we all know they make promises they don't keep.
Well, the same article said by Mr. Hartnett, saying, oh, that he changed the train schedules to be seamless with the BART station at Millbrae. But it was just about a year ago that I was in a meeting and he said, no, we're not going to do that. So I liked that, but you know, who knows? Who knows on there? Good. I'm glad you're on top of it. Vice Mayor Leva.
Yeah, two confusing things that just came. So Councilmember Pappin, if you can help me out here. Number one, we have a CCG representative, so that could be an update on every meeting. And two, secondly. Caltrans, I, I didn't hear out of tonight's meeting that we were going to have additional tracks. I heard tail tracks and I don't really know what that means. So that might be defined in a, in a, in a, you know, in a meeting going forward. Because I don't want to scare everybody that's listening to this right now for additional tracks. We, we might want to hear what tail tracks means.
I, I can, I can tell you, tail track is, is, is after the station where they park the trains. They would be, I think, I don't know the details of the project, but a tail track doesn't go anywhere. It's just like a parking track. So it wouldn't affect the station itself.
And it's on their own property.
Or it's a Burlingame.
That was like more of a Burlingame.
Because it's, because, but BART is our, you know, everything's on BART's property, but it's in our city. It's not in our city, I should say.
Right, or into Burlingame, yeah.
All right, so let's, let's get that clarified, please.
Yeah, and, and if we could, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor. There was supposed to be, the developer was supposed to improve the divider between El Camino Real. Like a fence going up there so people wouldn't cross. If we could also make that part of the briefing. That would be helpful since our mediums look terrible.
Was that Sarah Station, Councilwoman Pappin?
Sarah Station.
I think it was both. I think they both had to.
They both had to contribute twenty five thousand.
All right, let me, let me give you a quick update. Did, like you guys were all in shelter in place. I had a senior advisory committee, they came up with an idea that was pretty fun. And they decided that they're going to learn about different seniors in Millbrae. And their first interview was with Tom Doughty and he did an incredible presentation. And everybody's invited, so I encourage you all to check it out. It'll be on MCTV and you can see what he did. He did a beautiful presentation with PowerPoint and old pictures. And I, I was pretty impressed and very entertained for sure. And the other thing that I've attended is online, of course, is the HART Board meetings. And we also, I'm also on a subcommittee for the HART Subcommittee of, like, trying to. In, trying to see where we can take it to the next level. Because obviously we have some issues in housing and how we can get people involved in housing. And there's about five or six of us that have been meeting once a week on a Friday afternoon for a couple hours. So I'm, I'm looking forward to bringing to what comes out of that meeting in the next couple of weeks. Sal Board Meeting has been consistent. We've been meeting and unfortunately not able to obviously have the events that Sal's so great for. But that is an incredible group of people that is so, so valuable to our community. So I'm really happy to be part of it and I have been attending all those meetings through all the shelter in place. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, on Peninsula Clean Energy, tonight we had a special meeting to. Peninsula Clean Energy is thinking of joining another JPA. That would be all of the community choice aggregates or a good number of community choice aggregate entities around Northern California. So Marin, Sonoma, San Francisco, San Jose. I'm not sure if it's including Santa Cruz and the one in Alameda County. And so there had been concerns that once, the purpose of joining this regional JPA of CCAs. Is to leverage from each other and build more renewable energy facilities. And then the question that came up, this came up at PCE in December and again tonight, was. Our piece, Peninsula Clean Energy had a set of guidelines that we operate under. Use, using union labor, prevailing wage, the environmental attributes of a program. And if we do join with other CCAs, will we lose that or not? So today was a study session to talk about what could go in that language. And then there was on the financial side. Our CCA is doing really well. Peninsula Clean Energy is doing really, really well. It has lots of, I don't, I don't want to say lots of money, but it's, it's financially stable. It's paying its debts. It's doing well. But if we join in this mutual JPA and there are groups that aren't doing as well, what is the risk to Peninsula Clean Energy? So that was tonight's study session. It will be going forward. They have several openings on the executive board. The executive board meets on Monday morning and I don't know how that will get chosen. It turns out I have several other Monday morning meetings, but I was hopeful to get on the executive committee. Because we've lost a few of our environmental roots over the years of Peninsula Clean Energy. I attended CCG in that transition. That's where I heard about the green infrastructure. I have a learning curve there. I am always happy if Councilwoman Pappin wants to stay on it. It starts right after the legislation committee, which I believe Gina, you're the chair of, or you were the acting chair of. And our own community enhancement has met for the new year. They finished their second awards to the winter holiday prizes. And thank you to the city manager for coming up with the prizes to the homes on there. Kind of part of our feel-good. They did complete the code enforcement brochure, of which they will be so happy. And they are always huge fans of our staff member, Lamont Mack. And they would like to have Lamont come back and give them a talk. It was kind of news to them when the very next day that next door notice went out about the sidewalks in the front of the house. They're all cool with it, but. Just a little bit of coordination there, but just hearing how we're doing on code enforcement. A code enforcement update, I think, would be another good agenda item to bring to council. How are we doing both downtown? How are we doing in the residential areas? And they would appreciate that. But their other big thing is they have created a subcommittee to look at the city's climate action plan and try to take that plan and. Help us with the website so that the public will know what they could be working on voluntarily. And what the city is doing, so people will know what the city is doing in, in terms that the general public will understand. And part of that would also be hoping then to support the tree program when we get a tree program going on. In time for both Arbor Day, which is in March, believe it or not, March thirteenth to seventeenth in California. And then Earth Day in April. And I have high hopes that many of us will be vaccinated by then, so that maybe one of these days we can have. Our traditional Arbor and Earth Day events. But I do understand and they understand that it may be pushed off into the summer or into the fall. Depending on how the vaccination program rolls out. So with that, I, I thank you all tonight, made a few stumbles tonight. And thank you for the reminders from council members. And I believe tonight we are in closing. Closing in honor of our former senior commission member, Lou DeSalvatore. And. Honorable George Corey. And Mr., Mr. Gennella and. Mary Ann Gardner, a longtime active member of the Millbrae Historical Society. And I have notes on everybody here, but if council members want to speak on any of these significant losses to the city of Millbrae and our greater community. Please let me know.
There is one, Madam Mayor, if I may.
Uh huh, Mr. Fung.
Yeah, and so there's another community member that's been a long time, also a downtown merchant. And he also served on the Peninsula Chinese Business Association as a director, raised many funds for our schools. Name is Raymond Shan.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Right, and he passed away recently and he's been an active community member for a long time. He also owns a local business here in a restaurant. So, you know, our heart goes out to his family and, you know, we, we have his family in our hearts in this difficult time.
Thank you. And in learning how to work with the city clerk, it is my understanding that our city clerk tries to find. You know, some lovely sentences to add to the minutes for that. So she and I went over the three people that I knew about. And I'm sorry, I forgot about Floyd Gennella. How could any of us have grown up going to school in San Mateo County and not know Mr. Gennella? He was such a huge part of many of our academic experiences. And again, please add, Mr. Corey, long, long time Millbrae business owner, former council member and mayor of San Bruno. I have a former air force, played football for the University of Michigan. Oh, my gosh, that's so huge on there. He also was on the board of, I'm reading my notes here, of Life Moves and the Legal Aid Society of San Mateo County. I have to admit that my sister clerked for that law firm between her first and second, and second and third years of law school. So we feel Mr. Corey's loss greatly here. My sister feels his loss greatly. He was a great mentor to my sister in her early law and law school days. Just truly, and many people of Millbrae, if you're still watching this late at night, please go to Safeway. You can find the honorary George Corey bench at the Safeway, at the northern end of Safeway. And there is a plaque there commemorating Mr. Corey and his weekly meetings that he conducted there. And for Mr. DeSalvatore, I remember meeting him a few times at the senior commission. Always a lovely person, very happy person, good treats to the sister committee. But council members, if you have, if you want to share some of your memories, please, please do so.
I, I can't let the meeting go without saying how much George Corey meant to me. And I know Councilmember Pappin can relate to this. Both of our fathers were incredibly good friends, shared, my father shared birthday with George. And he has been an incredible mentor to me and probably one of my favorite people. So I thank you for the moment that I could. My feelings about George and his family. And I thank you for honoring him in the closing of this session. Thank you.
Thank you. And yeah, if I could add to that too. George is very much a family member to my family. And Monday Night Football at his office, a whole bunch of, only the men were allowed, but.
No girls allowed.
That's it, no girls allowed, but yeah, just a wonderful, wonderful man. And a huge supporter of Millbrae and all of our activity, all the fire assessments, everything that went on in Millbrae. George helped out and he was just a huge part of our community and the better Millbrae family. So he will be greatly missed. And yes, he did play for Michigan and he had the nose to prove it, I think. Except in the days when they had just the leather helmets. And you could never call him on football Sundays or Monday nights because the games were going on or Saturdays too, because of the college games. And as the mayor noted, Floyd Gennella was just, if you can read, but both of the obituaries for these gentlemen. They were so amazing to the cities, the county, everybody, just such dedication. So hearts go out to Margaret Taylor, his wife. And children and please do the research, look up these gentlemen. And my neighbor, Lou was my neighbor forever. So, and he's quite a charmer on the senior advisory committee. And ladies always liked it when Lou came visiting. So again, thank you very much. Everybody will be missed and I, and I, and Anders, the gentleman that you mentioned as well. And I do hope my neighbor is going to have a baby soon. So I hope we can balance these passings with birth announcements too sometimes.
I, I think that's a lovely idea. Yeah, I think that's a lovely idea. Okay, with that. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Very good. Okay, with that, thank you all. It has. Very good. Okay, with that, thank you all. It has been quite a week. We've got many months ahead to the public. I know all of us are looking forward to when that vaccine comes through. The city will try to get the information out as soon as we know what it is. That will, of course, come from the city. And everyone, in the meantime, please, I can't do the three W's, but please wear your mask in public. I'm wearing it now when I'm gardening in front because there are so many terrific walkers in my neighborhood. Please wear your mask, please wash your hands, please, whatever that third W is.
Watch your distance.
Oh, watch your distance. It's really tough. It's really tough. But everyone, keep safe. Happy New Year, and we will see you in two weeks.
If I may say one thing.
Yes, Mr. Fung.
I think, oh, Vice Mayor Oliva just left. It was actually going to be her birthday pretty soon. So I was going to wish her happy birthday before the meeting ends, but I think she just took off.
Well, very good. Happy birthday, Ms. Oliva. Okay, take care of you all.
Mayor, we need, we need a motion to adjourn the meeting in a second.
I'm sorry, you guys didn't give me that training. May I have a motion in a second, please?
Motion. Second.
Happen Fung, call the vote.
Um, Councilmember Hallibur.
I don't think we need a vote for this, but aye.
Okay.
Councilmember Fung.
Aye.
Councilmember Pappan.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Oliva is excused. Mayor Hallibur.
Aye.
Mayor Snyder, I apologize.
Hi, on my training, we didn't get to the very end of the meeting. So thank you all.
The mayor can close the meeting.
Oh, the mayor can close the meeting? Okay, thank you, Reuben.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.